Good evening and welcome to the Board of Appeals July 21, 2022 meeting. Three of us are here and Dave and Kim are Zooming. Can you hear us? Dave and Kim?
Yes.
Most important, how are you doing? Health-wise, how are you feeling?
Oh, you talking to me Barney?
Well, you and Kim, yes.
Yeah. Well, like I've said before, it's kind of like one day at a time, but we're getting better every day.
Good.
Good.
Kim?
I'm slowly feeling better. Thank you.
Good. Yeah, I feel like I'm looking at the Wizard of Oz.
I know, right?
You know, several years ago, my wife and I got a children's version of The Wizard of Oz for our granddaughters. And I asked one of my granddaughters one day where the wizard lives. And she says in Foxborough, so I think that's proof of the pudding. So the first item is board reorganization, which we were slated to do at our June meeting. And we decided to defer until tonight, Dave, because you weren't there. So if anybody wants to make a motion?
I move that each of us retain the current seats that we're in.
Second?
Second.
So this is only the three of us, just Dave, Kim, and me. Only the regular members can vote on this. And the board seats are me, Barnett Overett as chairman, David Brown, vice chairman, Kimberly Mellon as clerk. So we have a motion and a second. We have to do a vote by roll call. So Dave Brown?
Yes.
Kim Mellon?
Yes.
And Barney Overett, yes. So that motion carries. The next item is the minutes from the June 30 meeting. Does any member, and all of us vote on this, does any member have any questions?
No. I got Barney sent me edits and Kim sent me a couple of administrative edits also, so just spelling corrections.
Dave and Kim, any questions?
No, nice job. Thank you. Again, Diana, as always.
Okay, motion please.
Motion to approve the minutes from June 30. June 30 meeting, thank you. As amended. As amended.
Second?
Okay, good. I gotta do it by roll call. Dave?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Kurt?
Yes.
And Lorraine?
Yes.
And Barney, yes. So the motion carries. Any other administrative business?
Barney, I need to make a disclosure.
Actually, wait, it's on the next matter, Dave, when we begin the public hearing. So any other administrative matters? Okay, we have to wait until 7:05. I'll go by my watch and then I'll read the notice for the public hearing.
Barney, there was the old post office on the Common. Citizens Bank is moving in there and Scott is going to send them to us because they want an oversized sign.
Yeah, I'm aware of that.
So, but the lady was just sent the application today, so that might possibly...
You said the old post office?
Yeah, that might be in August. And I gave out to everybody, well, if she gets it, well, maybe not. Depends. And so for August, so far we have is the cell tower on Route 1.
Okay, the time being 7:05 PM, we have the continued public hearing. 119 Moore Street Realty Trust requests a comprehensive permit under the local initiative program pursuant to Mass General laws, Chapter 40B, Sections 20 to 23, to construct 52 condominium residential units, 25% of which will be affordable to households earning not more than 80% of the area median income. Property situated at 119 Moore Street in the general industrial district and is in a future Aquifer area overlay district. So I just want to take sort of attendance. We've got two of our members, of course, who are Zooming. Dave Brown and Kim Mellon, Kurt, Lorraine, and I, Diana are obviously here. Judy Barrett is here. Is Dylan O'Donnell and Jane Davis from Environmental Partners, both are here. Unfortunately, Paige Duncan is unable to attend tonight because of a personal matter. And also unfortunately, Scott Shippey, the building commissioner, is unable to attend. Scott's at Gillette Stadium where a concert is being held, doing whatever building commissioners do at Gillette Stadium during a concert. Dave?
Yes, Barney, I'd like to make a disclosure of the appearance of a conflict of interest, which I did file with the town clerk a couple of weeks ago. And what it says upon is I know Mike Sage by means of being on various committees with him over the years. And also I know Bill Kispara in his role as the building commissioner and zoning enforcement officer, as well as a personal friend. I will say that taking this into account, the facts that I have disclosed above, I feel that I can perform my official duties objectively and fairly.
Thank you. Now, Dave, you missed the last meeting. You also filed an affidavit, I believe, with the...
Yes, I did. I filed an affidavit the other day that said that I viewed the video and audio recording of the meeting of June 30. And I guess I would say I don't see that it would win any awards, but I was interested.
So inasmuch as Dave has filed the affidavit, he will be tonight one of the three of us who will be voting. And because Dave is a regular member, any matters that we need to vote on will be voted upon by Dave Brown, Kim Mellon, and myself. I think, as I mentioned at the last hearing session, if Dave unfortunately would be missing another meeting, he no longer would be able to vote. Personally, I hope that does not happen because, number one, we need him here. And more important, I'm concerned about Dave's health and don't want to see a situation in which a medical situation forces him to miss a meeting. So I just want to update some things that have happened since the June 30 hearing session. First of all, we conducted a site walk on July 13. We've also received several additional materials, all of which Diana has placed on the town website. First is my letter of July 1 to the applicant regarding our reservation of rights concerning the safe harbor defense. Number two is a Phase 1 site assessment and letters concerning the Rumford River Bridge that were forwarded by Bill Buckley on July 6. We have a July 14 email from Deputy Fire Chief Larissy, a July 18 email from Jessica Uth, and I apologize if I'm mispronouncing her name, from 71 Moore Street, in which she has expressed opposition to the proposed development, a July 19 email to the board from Kathy Vandenboom with attached video and photos, a July 19 email to the board from Kathy and Carl Vandenboom with attached videos, photos, and an article from the 2010 Sun Chronicle, July 19 transportation review, and civil site review letters from Environmental Partners, and a July 21 letter from Attorney Drew Hoyt concerning environmental and public health issues and scope of the environmental peer review. Again, all of these items are now on the website. Believe that all of the communication from residents is in a separate folder on the website. Am I correct?
Yeah, I have a butter, I have department head comments and then resident comments. There's two different folders, so it wouldn't keep putting it on page after page after page.
So what I'd like is a motion to enter into the record and waive the reading of all those items that I just mentioned. If either Dave or Kim can make that motion?
So moved.
Kim, second?
Second.
Okay. Again, a roll call vote. Dave?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
And Barney Overett, yes. As I indicated, all correspondence that we have received to date from town officials, town departments, town boards, is posted on the website. We're required by the Department of Housing and Community Development regulations to solicit comments and recommendations from various departments and officials. But we're not required to accept or adopt those recommendations. Regardless, we're extremely appreciative for all the comments and recommendations that we have received to date and for any that are to come in the future. And we can't properly exercise our responsibilities without their assistance. Now, in addition, all correspondence, as I indicated, that we've received to date from the public has been posted on the website. Kim Mellon once mentioned in one of our hearings, and she may not remember which, but I certainly do, that we listen to you. We will consider all of your concerns in making our decision. That doesn't mean that we guarantee that we'll agree with you, but we listen and we consider. I want to summarize what I understand from the correspondence that we received as far as the concerns and issues that have been presented. To my mind, the salient issues are traffic and safety, and we'll talk a little bit about that tonight, environmental issues, wetlands and potential or possible contamination. And I've earmarked the September 29 hearing session for that. Density or number of units, and the ability to deny the application because Foxborough has attained and exceeded the 10% statutory minimum objective that's set forth in Chapter 40B and the DHCD regulations. I want to make a couple of small comments concerning the latter, and then we'll leave that subject to a later discussion. First, again, as I mentioned at the last hearing session, Foxborough's subsidized housing inventory that's maintained by the Department of Housing and Community Development states that Foxborough has 12.8% of its full-time residential units as being affordable units, essentially units, residential units, that are for low and moderate income housing. That number is likely to decline somewhat. That number is based on figures from the 2010 census. And at some point, hopefully within the next six to 12 months, DHCD will modify or amend, update the subsidized housing inventory. Foxborough will probably decline somewhat. Notwithstanding, I don't believe will decline below 10%. So at least for the next 10 years, we should still be in a safe harbor position. Second, the actual percentage of Foxborough's affordable residential units that are on the subsidized housing inventory is, if my arithmetic is correct, 6.74% of the total of the town's residential units. And that's because of the method that DHCD uses to calculate the affordable units that are on the inventory. In a housing development where the units are owned, for example, in a condominium development, only the actual affordable units that are owned are eligible for inclusion on the SHI. And that contrasts with a rental housing development, where all of the residential units, both market rate and affordable, are included, are eligible for inclusion on the inventory. Now, be that as it may, if the state says we're over 10%, we're over 10%. And that's obviously the status right now, and I believe it'll be the status to continue for years to come. One final point. Kathy Vandenboom, in her presentation last month, asked, "When does it end?" And I'd like to give you my answer to that, and that's that theoretically, it may never end. Mark Twain once said, "Buy land, they're not making any more of it." I think whenever a developer sees a plot of land that the developer believes is conducive to the type of housing that we're considering tonight, or the type of housing that we've approved in other comprehensive permits, the potential for a 40B application exists. If that's the case, it's our responsibility as the Board of Appeals, regardless what our configuration may be at that point in time, to render the decision that we believe to be appropriate under the circumstances. Not the right decision, and that goes for everything that we as a Board of Appeals consider, but the appropriate decision based on the circumstances and the facts that we're to consider at that point in time. Doesn't matter what another town may have done. It matters what is in front of us. And we'll strive to reach a decision, whatever it may be, that we believe to be appropriate under the circumstances and based upon the relevant facts. With that, you wanted to do stormwater first? So we have three items I'd like to cover tonight. First would be to review the stormwater report that Mr. Buckley prepared, the preliminary utility and stormwater report. And then we would have, obviously, questions, comments from us, questions, comments from our peer review consultants at Environmental Partners. So Bill, whenever you're ready.
Mr. Chairman, good evening. For the record, my name is Bill Buckley from Bay Colony Group. And I'm going to go over the preliminary utility and stormwater report that I prepared. And I think it'd be worthwhile to just touch on, you know, what we had to do tonight. And so when we have to prepare these type of reports for a comprehensive permit, we naturally go to the statute and the regulations. And so Foxborough's regulations pretty much mirror the statute. So we have to do a preliminary site development plan, showing dimensions, locations of proposed buildings, streets, drives, parking areas, walks, paved areas, landscaping improvement, open areas within the site, existing and proposed topography, all wetland resource areas, and any significant natural resource or wildlife habitat areas identified by the state. We have to prepare an existing site conditions report on the proposed site and its surrounding areas, conforming at a minimum with Section 301E of the Foxborough subdivision regulations, which is the regulations for preliminary subdivision plans, and showing the location, nature of existing buildings, existing street elevations, traffic patterns, characters of open space, if any, in the neighborhood. And then preliminary scaled architectural drawings, typical floor plans, tabulation of buildings by type, size, et cetera, preliminary subdivision plan, which this is not. And then a preliminary utilities plan showing the proposed locations and types of water, storage, and drainage facilities, including hydrants. So that's the standard, and I'm going to just jump now to the Section 301E. And I'm not going to go down all of it, but one of the things it talks about is proposed system of drainage and adjacent existing natural waterways in a general manner. So I just wanted to bring that up because I think some of the comments later are going to be too general, or why didn't we get more information, that type of thing. So what I want to do is I'm going to put up on the board the site plan. Let's see. And I want to share. There it is. So I know everybody has the drawings. And so what I want to take you to is to Sheet 1, because I want to go over the existing conditions. And so this is Sheet 1, which is the existing conditions plan. And I'm going to just leave it here, and then I'm going to blow up in a minute, make it a little bit bigger. So the site is a six-acre site. It's located on the north side of Moore Street or northwest side. And it's adjacent to Bleachery Pond, and I think everybody's familiar with it. It's six acres, and one of the questions that was asked for me last week was how much of that six acres is actually being used for the project? And it's approximately four acres. So, you know, between the grading, buildings, et cetera, it's probably about four acres out of the six acres of the site is being used. Site contains wetlands on it, along, of course, along Bleachery Pond. You can see along the south side here. The Rumford River comes into the pond underneath the existing bridge over the site. There's also the wetland that's adjacent to Rumford River, stretches in the back here. And you can see a piece of it comes on the property, comes on the property here. And then in the rear, some of it is just on the edge of the property up here in the northwest corner. This is an isolated wetland. There's another isolated wetland here. As I think I stated at the last meeting, this has gone before the Conservation Commission, and it has been approved, and it has been appealed, specifically the location of the riverfront area. So down here in the red, put it into red, this is the riverfront area as approved by the Conservation Commission. And so anything to the right of it, as I'm waving my little hand here. Because the site is a comprehensive permit, it doesn't necessarily have to comply with local regulations. So what we've shown on here is the 100-foot buffer zones, which is in orange. You can see around here, and it goes out there. So this portion of the site would fall under the jurisdiction of the Conservation Commission under the Wetlands Protection Act, not just the local bylaw. And finally, because the site does also lie partially in a floodplain, a FEMA designated floodplain, which in this particular case is elevation 181.4. And that's in this light blue line that starts over here, kind of goes up in here in this hole, runs along the edge of the pond, comes in here, comes up here a little bit, and then goes back down into the site. So that is the general layout, and I want to zoom in to give you a better look of the area that we're talking about. Okay, here we go. That's easier for me. So I'm going to just zoom in on this portion of the site because that's the area where, you know, the vast majority of the work is done. One of the things we look at in this is the topography of the site. So I think as everybody saw on the site walk yesterday, well, last week, it's pretty flat. So along the edge of the pond, you're at about elevation 181. When I say 181, I mean 181 feet above sea level. And, you know, as you go into the back here, it starts to go up a little bit, maybe elevation 183. This back northwest corner, which we were walking down the gravel drive, and that's where we made the turn. If you look to the right there, probably couldn't see much because of the heavy vegetation. But that climbs up to about elevation 190, and then it drops back as you're walking down here, again, about elevation 181. There's a little lower area in here as well. The middle of the site, I would say, is approximately elevation 186, just kind of as a ballpark number to put in your head. So we have the topography, we have the wetlands. And now the next thing we would do is we're going in and we do soil evaluations of the site. And this is a requirement of the DEP stormwater standards, and it's also actually in the subdivision regs in a general manner. So on this site, these dots, as you can see them around here, there's, those are where we dug the test pits. And we did 10 of them, so 10 of them on approximately a four-acre site. That's a pretty decent amount of test pits on it. What we were trying to do was get a feel for groundwater elevations within the area, within the entire site. And we also wanted to get, wanted to know what kind of soils we're talking about. Because that has to do, the groundwater has to do with things like, gee, what elevation are you going to set your basement? Because you certainly don't want to set it in the groundwater. I don't want to set it in the groundwater. And then stormwater, when we're dealing with that, when we're dealing with underground drainage or any type of infiltration, even if it was above ground, we have to, if we're going to have a dry basin, for example, we want the system to be above the groundwater. And then there are certain standards for that. So if you, and that was all in my report, but I'm going to kind of talk you through here. So over in this area here, where this test pit is, we found groundwater about 84 inches, elevation 178. And I'm going to go this way because it kind of makes more sense. So as you go over here, this is test pit 6, groundwater at 58 inches, elevation 178.7. Test pit over here, 71 inches, 178.1. Down here, test pits 2 and 3, groundwater is at about 3 feet, 177. So you can see around the edge here, it's kind of elevation 177. So then we start moving up here into this portion of the site. Groundwater here was at 3 feet, but it was at elevation 181. So elevation of the groundwater is higher, even though you're getting higher up there. And I think that has to do with the wetlands in the rear there. And then up in this area here, which is the highest point of the site, we had groundwater at 30 inches, elevation 182.7. So up in this area here, 182, 182 and 1/2. In this area here, the middle, test pits 1, 4, and 5, we had, we hit groundwater at between 69 and 84 inches, but very consistently at about elevation 180, 179, 8, et cetera. And that's, and the reason, and the reason why I'm talking you through that. So I want, I'd like you to take a look at the next page. And that's Sheet 2, which I'll bring up here. And I know you can't read that, but if you look at your drawings and you look at the, underneath the wording where I say like Building D, for example, TF is top of foundation, BF is basement floor, GF is garage floor. So for example, these buildings right in this area here, and actually all of them, and this is where I was telling you the groundwater is about elevation 180. So you look at the basement floors in that area, and it's, they're all around 182.5, 183, 184. They're at least 2 and 1/2 feet above the groundwater. We're trying to keep it up. But remember, I said the average elevation in there is about 186. If you look at this contour here, that's about 190. So we're filling this site. For the most part, this is definitely an import site. We're importing material into it in order to pick the site up, in order to build the drainage system high enough to stay above the groundwater, and in order to build the buildings high enough, again, to stay above the groundwater. It's important to note that this is estimated high groundwater. Estimated high groundwater, and we measured these in February. We found the soils on the site, again, we did 10 test pits. We found the soils on the site to be sand when we did our investigations. What does that mean? Sand is very permeable, class, called a Class A soil, water moves through it quickly. And then there's A, B, C, D. D is muck, you know, like what you'd normally find in a wetland. And then B and C go down. So we did the soil evaluations. We do that, it was in the field, and we classify them. And then what we also do, in order to check ourselves, is we send out a representative sample to a laboratory to run a sample, to make sure that our field investigations are correct. Because sometimes, you know, it's hard, even though, you know, I've been doing it a long time. So the difference between a sand and a loamy sand is sometimes it's difficult to come up with, and a sandy loam and a sand, a sand. So we send it out to a lab. So we sent out three of these test pits. So we sent out three of these test pits to labs and, um, two of the three came back confirming sand. One of them came back loamy sand, which is a little less permeable. So what we'll do is when we do the actual design of this, we will take the lower value. So we do, and that's, that's how we do it. And it's quite a difference between a sand, which we can use eight inches per hour of infiltration and a loamy, a loamy sand, which we can use, I guess a little over two inches per hour. Yeah, something like that. Big difference. So, you know, that's why we want to be careful and conservative. So if we go to the next page, I think, next page would be the utilities, preliminary utilities plan. And I know this is busy, so I'm going to zoom up on it even a little more. So you can see what we've done is we've kind of shaded out the, um, the buildings and the parking and stuff in order to, and we've colored the, the preliminary utility layout. So the way we're, we're going, we're proposing to do this, we're grading this site and it's hard to go up, but we're grading this site so that it pitches, this is kind of a ridge through here. And it's going to pitch this way, this way, to these two sets of, to the set of catch basin. And then it's going to pitch this way and this way to this set of catch basins down on the site. And they will capture the runoff in that area. And then in this area here and in this area here, what we're proposing is the construction of subsurface drains. So I'm going to get out of this for a sec and I want to, and that, because I know probably most people aren't familiar with what these things look like. So I have a, I have a picture I want to show you. It's not there. Let me get back in. Share. So what these are, is these are Caltech stormwater systems. And what these are, these are plastic chambers. They're different sizes. Um, you know, they come in different configurations. Some of them are smaller, less, or shallower and wider, maybe longer. Some of them are higher and it just depends on the design, limitations like depth of groundwater, how much fill you have over it, et cetera. And this is, but this is a good representation of what it is. And they're, we, they're all over town. You just don't see them because they're, they're there. So for example, I'll give you the Chestnut Green down at the state hospital, that parked that whole, um, commercial portion of it, these are all underneath it. So what you have here is, for example, here's a catch basin. And then it will go into some type of water quality inlet. And then it will go out into the system and then it recharges into the ground. And it's, now this, you can see this crushed stone underneath, filter fabric on top. So that's what you'll see. Here's a picture of it. There's a guy, you know, you can see the size of it. Some of them are quite large. This one will be pretty big. See this one right here? That's a really large one. These are probably more normal sized ones, maybe 36 inches high. So that's what the system looks like. So let me, um, go back to a...
Bill, so you'll have that adjacent or approximate to each of the catch basins?
This will be, let me, let me go, let me just go back to my other one. I'll show you where. And I don't know why I can't find that.
Is that in the wastewater as well?
Direct it to me, please.
Is that in the wastewater as well?
Bill, you want to answer that?
No.
It does not.
Okay.
Let's see. Okay. So, so where we are is, so here's our catch basins here, catch basins here, that will be handling, uh, basically the driveways. And in this area here, in between these buildings and that courtyard area, I don't know if you remember, we, we walked right past the, uh, the telephone pole and was looking toward the house. And that was going to be the courtyard area. So you can see here, we did two test pits in the area because we want to check those, check what's going on in that area. And it's going to be approximately 240, 250 of these galleys will be underground. It will come into the catch basins, it will go into this, um, water quality unit. What is a water quality unit? It's like a manhole, but inside it, it typically has some type of structure or some type of mechanism. It's a mechanical thing, which what I call it is it brings the water in, it goes around in a vortex, the sand and heavy materials drop to the bottom and then it goes out. And that's really the way it's designed. It's designed to take out what's called total suspended solids. We have to remove at least 80% of total suspended solids before it, um, is discharged to any resource area. So in this particular design, it will come into the catch basins. Catch basins also have a total suspended solids removal rate of 25%. Then the remainder will go into this basin or into these water quality units, which depending on what you use, have anywhere from another 50 to 80% removal. Why is that important? Why do we have these? It's because of the soils we have here. So the soils are so permeable, um, that we need to get an extra large amount of, um, total suspended solids removal before it goes into the system. So the number the state uses is 44%. So we'll be well above the 44% before it goes into the chambers. And it goes into the chambers, which I just showed you pictures of, and it infiltrates. And then the chambers themselves also get, give you about 80% total suspended solids removal before it gets down into the groundwater. So you're getting cleanliness, cleanliness of better than 90%. The standard is 80%. So, um, that's the type of system, that's one portion of the system here. It's multi-phase, um, catch basins, water quality, and then the basin themselves. And in this particular case, um, we're also doing another, an LID, what's called a low impact development, element, which is all these roofs. So in Fox, well, not just in Foxborough, in the, um, when you have roofs that are just residential roofs, for example, um, the runoff coming off those roofs is considered clean. You don't need to clean it. We don't have to run it through catch basins, water quality inlets, anything. We can directly discharge it to whatever infiltration system we're proposing. So what we do here, and what we're doing in this particular case, is there are separate drain lines that connect all of these roofs, drains, your gutters, your downspouts will be captured and they'll be directed directly into this storm drain system. And because of the topography here, some of these, like these buildings here, all the, um, the duplexes along the lake, they're, they're walkouts. Except for this one on the end. So this one on the end doesn't even have a basement because the water table's so high and the topography is so low. So this one doesn't even have a basement, but these have basements and they're walkouts. So what that means is we just can't pick up that downspout because it's down like eight feet from the front of the house. So some of these buildings will not be able to, won't be able to recharge. And that's okay because you, you can do what's called a weighted TSS removal and you don't have to worry about it. And because it's clean, it can go into the lake without having to be treated. We just have to take, um, we have to make sure that we, um, balance the flows in and out, which I'll talk about in a minute. So those will, these will discharge, these roof drains will discharge, all of these and here will discharge to this larger system and these here will discharge to this smaller subsurface system, which will be located over here under that other element where there'd be a gazebo and a grass area. So that's, that's storm water, the main area. But let me just talk about over here. Because of the grades, we can't get the water from this portion of the driveway, um, into a catch basin or anything. It's just going to runoff, like it does now. The run, there's no runoff, there's no, nothing stopping it. It goes over the grass and it ends up in a wetland. And it's going to be the same thing here, but we have to treat it. You know, we have to treat that portion of the water. We can't discharge unclean, any unclean water. So what we have here is two rain gardens. What's a rain garden? It is like a, a depression in the ground, very gentle, that contains a mixture of, it has plants, it has mulch, it has, and underneath it, it has sand and stone. And then the water comes in and as it's moving through, that bio retention mix cleans the water till it eventually infiltrates into the ground, which in this particular area as we talked about is really good. So we get, um, water, uh, water quality fixed in that area through those two, through those two rain guards, that element. So, um, that's what we're doing, that's how we're dealing with storm water. It's a multi-stage system, um, as I just discussed. Um, we separate the roof runoff, which is an LID element that we look at. We're going to get water quality in 50 or 80%. And, you know, we understand and know that we have to be above the groundwater, which is why the site is being filled as much as it is and as well as make, ensuring that those basement floors are above the groundwater. And I think if you don't mind, Mr. Chairman, I'll just touch briefly on SOAR.
Let me ask you one question first. What if the river were to overrun its bounds, its banks? How would that be addressed?
These, so it wouldn't impact anything except for perhaps the rain gardens. We'd have to take that into account down there because, you know, that, they would do it. But when you have those type of floods, these, like a rain garden, it's not designed for that. It's just not designed to handle that big a flow. It's not a water volume thing. It's a water quality thing. So something like, and I could be wrong here, but it's this, no, but something like 95% of all the rain storms we see in this part of our world is a half an inch or less. So you're, you're treating most of the runoff over the course of a year into it. Yes, sometimes you're going to get the big storms and it just isn't going to work, but it's not designed for that. It's designed to treat that large number of smaller storms. It doesn't handle the big ones. It's not a water volume thing. It's a water quality thing.
So, so is there a means of handling those big ones or?
For that?
And, and those, that area, those are the houses, not houses, those are the, um, units that will be subject to DEP.
Sure.
Ultimate decision, correct?
Oh, let me just, I didn't, I didn't say this. So when we design these underground drain systems, we have to design them for the 100 year storm. So they're designed for the big storm. So what they do is they'll capture the runoff, they'll infiltrate most or all of it and there might be an overflow below the 100 year, but usually we try and make sure that the system is designed that the overflow is above the 100. So we want it to capture and infiltrate that 100 year storm. And I always say 100 year storm because that's like the common terminology. But the correct terminology is, is that storm has a 1% chance in any given year of happening. So you could have two 100 year storms in two months. You know, you could hit the lottery twice too. But that's, that's the correct terminology of it. There's a 1% chance. So the, all of the systems, all of the infiltration systems we have here are designed for the 100 year storm because that's a requirement of the DEP stormwater standards, which we have to meet for this project. I think that's what you were alluding to. As far as basements and the buildings, we, we, those will all be above the 100 year storm elevation in this particular area, which has been determined to be 181.4 feet. So as, as I mentioned, my lowest, um, basement floor is 182, 182, 182. And, and those are, and duplexes along that side. It doesn't sound like a whole lot, but, you know, we're also trying to minimize the amount of fill we're bringing in there. Some of those houses, the front of them are going to be, we're going to be bringing in seven or eight feet of fill. Any more on that? The, so...
Well, actually, why don't you continue then? I'll just open it to the rest of the board.
And so in orange, if you, again, you're looking at your sheet three, in orange, I've put in the SOAR. So this site, there is SOAR out on, um, Moore Street and it's a gravity SOAR. It was originally laid by Cannon Forge, ties into the main Mansfield system. It ties into a pump station. I think it's about a, maybe a mile, half a mile to the, toward Mansfield, toward the south. And, um, but there's a catch, there's a manhole out front on our, right on our driveway. And we've looked at it, we've looked at the elevations and the, and the issue is the river. You know, we have the river there. We could probably make the elevations work, but we can't get under the river. So what we'll, what we've done is, and we don't want the pipe to be hung. It can't, it can't hang in the river because when you get that big storm, it'd just rip the pipe out. So the, um, what we've decided to do is we're going to put in a pressure system in here. So what is a pressure system? It's actually similar to the one, if you remember, we did on Cary Lane down off of, um, it was a comprehensive permit behind, um, underneath Foxborough. So each house or each building in this particular case will have its own little grinder pump and it's probably five foot high, maybe a 36 inch diameter, plastic chamber is buried in the ground. Or you could put them inside, depending on what the contractor wants to do. And each unit, um, that pumps out into a, a main in the street. Now a typical main for a gravity SOAR is an eight inch main and that's actually what's out on the street. These mains coming out of the house are in only an inch and a half. And the mains in the driveways, we haven't, we haven't done the design yet, but I would be surprised if they're more than two, two and a half inches because there's just not that much flow coming out of these, this. So it ties into there and it flows by pressure out to, our plan is to go underneath the river. We'll drill underneath the river so we don't have to dig out the river. The alternative is to put a cofferdam up, dig it out and it's just too painful. So we'll drill underneath the river. We did something similar to this in Mansfield when I did the Willowdale Golf Course, if anybody wants to take a ride over there. There's a bridge there. We drilled underneath. And then what we'll do is on the other side of the bridge closest to Moore Street, we'll put a gravity SOAR. So that would be a regular SOAR, eight inch pipe flowing by gravity into there. So each of these buildings will have its own grinder pump. Each of the buildings, when we designed these, will also have a backup generator. It's able to at least run the grinder pump because if you lose power for three days, those, they don't hold a lot of flow. So that's the type of system we're proposing. We've had some discussions with the DPW. They, actually in one of the letters, they said that they've run a, an analysis that they, they don't think that the SOAR can handle the capacity out there on Moore Street. So we're talking to them about that. And, um, it's an issue we have to address. The, um, the water, I think we've talked about it. There's a six inch water line that comes in from the north, which is right here, and it comes into the site through the town owned land from a town main that runs from Morse to, um, Spring. And so the water department has asked us, and it is actually a requirement, to upsize that to, or we have to have an eight inch line within the site because in order to serve, uh, man, uh, excuse me, hydrants, we need to have an eight inch line serving the hydrants. So what we're showing here is that we will loop this water line through the site all the way out to Moore Street. Again, drilling underneath the river, although I've had discussions with Chris Gallagher about alternatives. And, um, we'll tie into the existing eight inch water line that is, um, in, in front of the Vandembum's house. So now it will be a loop, it will loop the system through. We don't know what the different, um, you know, the size, it might end up still being a six out to the, to, um, the cross country, but an eight inch will be what would be within the site and it will connect into the eight, uh, in Moore Street. So I think that ends my discussion, Mr. Chairman. So I think that ends my discussion, Mr. Chairman.
Electricity and gas, you want to just quickly?
So electricity, there's no gas on the site.
Propane.
I'm sorry?
Propane gas?
I think it's oil right there now, it's oil on site, but there's no, there's no natural gas. If they want to put propane in there, that would be, I guess, a choice, I'm not sure if we've got to that level of detail yet. But the electric comes in now through an overhead line, I'll just kind of show it to you here, I think everybody saw it. So out here at the street, it comes in, goes over the lake, it hits another pole right here, which is right on the edge of the lake. And our plan is to pick it up there and go underground, and we'll loop it through. It will not be an above-ground system. Unfortunately, because we're, we have, I don't even know who owns it anymore, National Grid, Mass Electric, whoever's the owner of the current owner, you know, it used to be that you could talk to them, go over to Brockton and work with their engineers, they don't do that anymore. So what we have to do is, we have to wait for them. They design the system, and we can't, they won't even send it to their engineers until we have our approvals. But what I can tell you is, it's gonna come in overhead like it does, and it's gonna go underground, so it won't be an above-ground system. That's it.
So Bill, just wanted to clarify, in your report, you know, there is a sentence that it's anticipated the site's gonna be serviced through propane tanks, but you're saying it's oil?
It's anticipated, well, yes.
Okay.
And when I mean propane, yeah, that was unclear. Usually what the backup generator is either a propane.
Mm-hmm, okay. Is that it?
That's it.
Okay. It's probably easier for me to ask Lorraine and Kurt, if they have any questions before I look to somebody on the Zooming.
No questions, Mr. Chairman.
All right. Dave, any questions?
Yes, I was wondering what type of maintenance the systems will require, and tell us about the maintenance of the systems.
Okay, that's a great question. So maintenance is key, especially with underground systems. And what happens is, if you fail to maintain them, they clog, and it's very expensive to unclog them, especially if it's under pavement. So that's one of the reasons why we want the total suspended solids removal to be so high before it gets into the infiltration system. So the key is, is the maintenance of the catch basins, and the maintenance of the stormwater quality inlet. Catch basins are generally, you're required to service them four times a year. So that doesn't mean they have to be cleaned four times a year, but they have to at least be inspected, and then if the dirt in the bottom of them. A catch basin, I'm just assuming everybody knows, a catch basin is typically four-foot diameter and maybe eight feet high. The bottom four feet of it is just volume, and the pipe that goes out of it is four feet above it. And the purpose of that volume is to capture dirt. And so it goes in there, it settles to the bottom, and it doesn't go out into the pipe. So what we do is, we have to inspect it, and when it typically gets within, say, half of it, so two feet, you go in and you clean it. And the water quality inlets also have a annual, typically annual. At the beginning of this, at the beginning of the project, they require more frequent inspections, because you want to figure out, you know, what's going on here. It has to do with soils, it has to do with ground cover. So some sites, you might need more frequent inspections, and then on some sites, you know, you need to do at least a year. And that's put out by the manufacturer, so depending on the type of system that goes in there, we will put in our operations and maintenance plan, which we prepare for every project. So when the operation and maintenance plan will be usually a link, we give a link to whatever product we're using. And that's also because it's constantly being upgraded and changed. So if you just go to the link, you'll be able to see what the latest is, not what it was 10 years ago, when we did the design. So short answer, Dave, is quarterly for catch basins, not, probably semi-annually for the rain gardens, and then at least annually for the water quality inlets, could be more
Okay, a little more question about that. I presume they would be expected to keep a written record of their inspections?
Yes. So what we do, when we, I'm sorry, didn't mean to interrupt.
So I was gonna take it one step further forward, I guess, be the enforcer or checker to make sure that these inspections are occurring?
Truthful answer, it is, it's, if you're asking me what town official, nobody.
Yeah.
It's not going to happen. What it is, it would be the responsibility of the homeowners association, and so I just did one, so I'll give you an example. I just did a project on 17 Glenwood Ave, I think it's a five-unit, it's a five or six-unit, and we put that, because the contractor, again, that's another one, all those chambers are under the driveway. So what we did is, the developer, we put the operation and maintenance plan into the homeowners association documents. So there was an operation and maintenance plan for the septic system, because there's one septic system for the site, and there's an operation and maintenance plan for the stormwater system, and it's up to the homeowners association to do that and build that into their fees. There is a requirement to maintain documentation, that is written into the operation and maintenance plan. We usually give checklists, check sheets for each of the components, checklist when they do the inspections. There's other sheets for if they change it, if there's a change. So the documentation is there, it's up to them, and it is to their benefit to do so, because if it stops working, that's a problem. You know, it's a problem from them, all of a sudden you'll have flooding on their streets. So it's to their, just like you and your home, if you live, if you have a septic system, you can ignore it, but you'll be calling me if you don't. So you just maintain what you own, and that's it, but there's nobody checking Joe homeowner on his septic system either.
Okay, thank you.
Kim, any questions?
Yes, Barney, thank you, I do have a few questions. So I just want to make sure that I understood when, going back to when you were talking about the fill, so you were saying on the units that are closest to the lake, there would be seven or eight feet of fill, so does that mean that those buildings, you anticipate being seven or eight feet higher than the existing land at this moment?
Yep, yes, Kim. So I'm zooming in, just to give you, so you get a better look at this, I'm gonna zoom in even more now, because they're all about the same. So if you look in the back here, this elevation is 181, and this blue line, I put that, you asked me to do this during our sidewalk, I changed the floodplain line to light blue so you can see it better. But here's 181, that's approximately the elevation of the back of the house, back where it is today, so 181. So we need to make sure, we need to keep this high, because it's a walkout. So our basement floor is 182, but now you look up here, look, this is 180, this is elevation 182, this contour line, and this is maybe elevation 183. My top of foundation is 190, and my garage floor is 189. So I'm bringing in about seven feet of fill to the front of that building, in order to get the grade up, it's where it is, and to bring this driveway up. And you can, so, but you, I know it's hard to see, but between the buildings, it's sloping down. So that's 188, 187, 186, 5, 4, 3, 2. So you'd walk out, let's say you walked off your porch, you'd walk over to the left, and then you just start walking down this slope to the back of your house, and the back of your house, the basement, would be at the same grade as the existing grade. So we're not doing hardly any filling back there, for two reasons. The first is, we want to avoid filling close to the wetlands, and the other thing is, we want to avoid filling as much as we can in the 100-year flood zone. So in the front of this, for example, down this area, you're looking at eight feet of fill, seven, seven feet of fill in the front, but in the back, there's nothing. Does that make sense?
Yes, yes, thank you, that is definitely helpful. So, and, so I'm just wondering, if there were to be a 100-year storm, so now with the presence of this much fill, how does that impact the immediate area? You know, I guess in a 100-year storm, the water would generally, you know, behave and go and run in, it's typical ways, but now fill, new fill is there, so now what happens? What happens to the immediate area?
Yep. So let me just go over to this corner here. So this light blue line, and of course, there's more than one light blue line, but this light blue line right here, this is the 100-year storm, 181.4 is the elevation. So you can see we're filling, we're filling in this area here. So theoretically, when that storm hits, FEMA has determined that it's gonna flood to elevation 181.4. So we're keeping all of these basements, there's 182, 182, 182, 182, and there is no basement here, so this is 185. But again, I point you toward, here's the flood line, here, here, you can see it coming in, it goes across here, comes up a little bit. So this little bit of it is being filled, this area and here is being filled. So what does that do? When it floods to 181.4, all of these basements will be above that elevation, so they will not be impacted by it. But we're filling in the floodplain, so theoretically, we are removing flood storage. So if we remove flood storage, that means the flood elevation could come up. Now, by removing this little bit of flood storage, is that gonna affect that elevation? No. But it doesn't matter, it's, the regulation is, is no matter how little you impact it, you need to compensate for it. So what we're required to do is what's called compensatory storage. So if we are filling, for example, I don't have the numbers off, I have them somewhere in my folder, I don't have them on top of my head. Let's say, for example, we're filling 500 cubic feet of flood storage, a floodplain, in those two areas I'm pointing to you. I have to scoop that out somewhere else. So what we've done is, we've identified this area here as an area where we're gonna put, where we're gonna scoop out some of the ground, 500 cubic yards of dirt. We're gonna take 500 cubic, to really simplify it, we're gonna, if we're filling 500 yards of floodplain, we are gonna take out 500 yards of dirt in this general area in order to compensate for that. So it will not impact the flood elevation. And that's a very, very quick and dirty way. There's more criteria that goes with it, you know, we have to go foot by foot, so if we're filling 200 cubic feet in the 181 elevation, we have to take that out in 181 somewhere else. But in a general manner, we're just compensating for whatever we're filling by taking out an equal amount and putting it somewhere else. There's plenty, as I said, this site is a, we're gonna be bringing dirt in, so we'll put it somewhere else on the site, it's just that much more dirt we don't need to bring in.
Okay, thank you. And just so I understand, that blue dotted line, the light blue dotted line that you were pointing out to us earlier, that is an indication of flood zone AE, is that correct?
Yes, flood zone AE is determined by FEMA, I didn't determine it.
Absolutely right, FEMA did. And so, while we're not talking, we're not talking about this with this site, but if a building were to be built entirely within flood zone AE, would it be required, if you needed a mortgage, to have flood insurance for it?
Yes. And the other thing is, is you really couldn't build it in an, you just couldn't build it nowadays. You've seen pictures of mostly the seashore, where these guys build their houses on sticks, and that's what you end up having to do, you have to build it above the floodplain. And if you can get it above the floodplain, and the lowest adjacent grade, as long as the lowest adjacent grade to your house is above the floodplain, that removes the federal requirement to have flood insurance. And all of these, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Continue, sorry, I'm sorry, go ahead.
And all of these buildings will be that way. And what we'll have to do, and it just depends on what the owner wants to do, like, I'll give you an example, when we permitted this forever ago, I went into FEMA and filed what's called a letter of map amendment, a LOMA, and the letter of map amendment showed that all of the proposed buildings will be above the floodplain. And we could do the exact same thing here, the bank might require that, but even then, after the building is built, FEMA makes, the bank will make you go back in and do it after it's built, to make sure that you really did build it above the floodplain. So you'll end up doing, typically end up doing, two letters of map amendments, LOMAs.
And who does those, LOMAs?
An engineer, usually, and you file them with FEMA.
All right, so this would be prior to, this wouldn't be something that a homeowner would do, this would be something that would happen during the building process?
In this particular case, yes, yes.
Okay, and so, would these, I'm sorry, would these require flood insurance?
No, no, because we will be, all of these will be above the floodplain elevation, none of these buildings will have a flood up, will be below, none of the dirt, none of the ground next to these buildings will be below the flood elevation of 181.4, so none of them will be required to have flood insurance. The only thing that they might do, I doubt it, is maybe because a portion of the site is in it, they might require it, but I'm not sure about that, that's, that would be like an insurance guy question, but definitely not for the units.
Okay, so, but if an insurance guy were to be able to answer this question for us, then that would be site-wide possible insurance, so that would be something that the homeowners association would deal with?
Yes, because it wouldn't be on anybody's unit, it would be on the common ownership land, down by the bridge, or, you know, maybe where this gazebo is, actually, the gazebo's not even in it, but down by the bridge here, you know, this whole area is in the flood zone. So part of the driveway, the bridge would be in it, and I don't know how that, they would handle that.
All right, and speaking of the bridge, I apologize, this is really annoying, I'm sure, listening to me.
I do it all the time.
So, so we could talk about this, I guess, Mr. Chair, not sure whether this is the moment to ask some of these questions regarding flooding and the bridge, just curious a little bit more about that, and so I leave that up to the chair, is there another moment when questions of flooding and the bridge would be more appropriate, or is this the moment?
I mean, we're going to be talking next meeting about the design of the project itself, but as long as we're on it, and Bill is willing to stick to it, then, go ahead, Kim.
Okay, so on the sidewalk, Mr. Buckley, you had indicated that during a 100-year flood event, that the water would be approximately, and I'm guestimating what you sort of indicated, that it would be approximately one foot over the surface of the bridge, which is the only entrance and exit. And so, are there any sort of contingency plans for safe exit entrance onto the site for residents, safety officials, if someone were to need the fire department, the police department? Excluding, we had heard in one of the residence letters, that apparently a previous owner used to have a rowboat for floods, assuming that we don't have a rowboat for one of the fire engines. We get them on and off.
Right. So what we've, I think, subsequent to that... it's in your, your package somewhere. We met with the fire department, DPW, and Mr. Shippey. So the fire department has researched their regulations, national fire protection regulations, and has determined that they want the bridge to be a minimum of 20 feet wide. Right now, it's only 16 feet wide, 15 feet between the railings. So we will be designing a new bridge. And we will, we'll have to take into account that. And truthfully, off the top of my head, I don't know how, you know, I, I'd have to think about and figure out because we'd be lifting the bridge up. So we'd be filling in the floodplain. So how does that impact it? But are we really filling in the floodplain? Because it's a bridge. So I'd have to think about it. But we, I think that answers your question. We're going to be coming up with a new design, and the bridge will be, we'll make sure that it's above that base flood elevation.
The email from Deputy Chief Larissy that we entered into the record, as Bill indicated, requires a 20-foot wide bridge. And the bridge also must meet national highway standards.
Thank you.
Kim, anything further?
No, thank you. That's great. Appreciate it.
Judy, do you have any questions? Have we lost her? Okay. Well, let me go to Dylan. Actually, before I go to Dylan,
I'm trying to keep my video, my audio off, Mr. Chairman, just so I wouldn't inadvertently interrupt the meeting. But no, I don't have any questions at this time.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Bill, have you seen Dylan's letter?
I did. We got it today, Mr. Chairman. I've briefed.
Dylan, do you want to summarize and ask any questions you may have?
Yeah, sure. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I can provide a quick summary. Just upfront, I think Mr. Buckley's summary of the stormwater was a good one. Accurately represented the system and how it's intended to work. We'd like to emphasize again that since the comprehensive permit applications only require preliminary design plans, not enough information was provided for us to prepare a full review for conformance with the Massachusetts Stormwater Standards. When we're reviewing something like a residential subdivision that does require a full hydrologic design, but the comprehensive permit does not. So again, a full hydrologic or hydraulic analysis is not required by the comprehensive permit and was not prepared at this time. However, the preliminary design plans provided do provide information for us to understand the design intent and provide some substantive, and allow us to provide some substantive comments worth discussing. The majority of our comments in our letter are pertaining to stormwater, and they're more technical in nature. They can be ironed out through a dialogue with the applicant. But there's a couple of items I'd like to discuss. First, we had one comment related to the space allotted on-site for the proposed stormwater BNP's. In our letter, we did a back-of-the-napkin calculation using the water quality volume provided by the applicant. I'd like to just say, we realized that there was a small error in our math, and it appears that the allotted space for the stormwater infiltration chambers should be adequate. It's impossible to know for sure until a hydrology analysis is provided. But due to the density of the houses on-site, we just feel that the applicant should prioritize confirming that the allotted space for those stormwater infiltration units is adequate as soon as possible in the final design process, should that occur. One of the other comments we had is that the subsurface infiltration systems in this preliminary design do not include any overflows. It's common engineering design practice to provide emergency overflow piping on subsurface systems, even if they are designed to fully infiltrate the 100-year storm event. So that's, that was one of our other questions. And then some of our other most substantive comments pertain more to the bridge, which was already discussed. And then in the comment letter from the Foxborough Conservation Commission dated June 27, they indicated that the proposed water line should be connected from the line on Moore Street and not enlarged and expanded through the town's Rumford River Conservation Area. So that's just one thing we wanted to point out, and we defer to the Conservation Commission on the ruling for that item. So those are pretty much a summary of our letter and the most important comments we had. And like I said, I think a lot of the comments can be ironed out through a dialogue with Mr. Buckley.
And you would typically respond, correct?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. What I would, what I would ask, if it's okay with the board, is to let me talk directly with Dylan. And we can, typically what we do is we set up a working session, and then a member of the town staff usually sits in, and we just go through the comments and, you know, I'd be glad to submit additional information. You know, we're not going to do a full design, but you know, those are good comments. And we could submit additional information to give him some comfort, so we can give you comfort that what we're proposing is feasible.
Well, none of us are civil engineers, so it would make sense for you to go directly with him.
Okay.
Okay. Does any member of the public have any questions? And can you tell us who you are?
Yeah. Can I come to the podium?
Sure.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. My name's Drew Hoyt. I live at Nine We Met Lane in Foxborough. That's up in Summerfield. And I did have a couple of questions about the stormwater presentation and the dialogue. First, early in Mr. Buckley's presentation, Mr. Buckley alluded to test pits that had been taken across the site and gave sort of an overview of particularly the groundwater elevations in those test pits. And could I ask through you, Mr. Chairman, whether that information is anywhere in the record that's been submitted to the board? And if not, can we have it submitted to the board? Because that's interesting information, and I think relevant to some of the other, you know, concerns that I have about the project.
So I'm going to ask a question. I believe that would be covered in the Phase 1 site assessment?
No, it's in the Phase, it's in the preliminary stormwater and utility report. It's an appendix. All that information's in an appendix.
So if I were to go on the website, I would find it in the appendix to the preliminary stormwater report?
Yeah, it's Appendix A. It's the only appendix. It's easy.
Pardon?
It's the only appendix, Appendix A.
And that actually has the elevations cited with respect to, I think you were giving numbers that were in the range of 179, 182?
No. It has the data from the test pits. And then what you can do is look at the existing conditions plan, Sheet 1, see where the test pits are, and then do your own math. I was given.
I don't know whether, Mr. Chairman, it's possible to ask that that information be distilled down by the engineer into, into, that that, that, that process that was just described maybe be done by the engineer rather than by trying to superimpose one map with test pits on top of another? I just don't know that that's, sounds easy if you have a CAD program. Doesn't sound so easy if you don't have a CAD program.
Something like that feasible?
Sure. What I can do, Mr. Chairman, is when, in my discussions with Dylan, I'll just put a table in there in my written response that will include that data.
Okay.
Thank you. Second, I don't know if I heard this correctly, but if someone can clarify. I thought I heard it said by, by the peer reviewer that if, since a full level of design, stormwater design has not been presented, but rather more of a conceptual design, that the peer reviewer is actually incapable of determining whether the project will in fact conform with MAS DEP stormwater standards? That's what I thought I heard. I'm not trying to put words in anyone's mouth, but I wondered whether, first, it could be clarified whether that is in fact what was said. And if so, it just seems to me that it's well within the board's reasonable, it would be well within the range of reasonable for the board to ask for a sufficient level of design to actually allow the peer reviewer to, to determine whether the project will in fact comply with MAS DEP stormwater standards. And I could be just misconstruing, but that's what I thought I heard.
Dylan, can you respond?
Yeah, sure. So what you said is correct, is that the applications submitted did not, does not provide sufficient design efforts to, to fully review the project for conformance with the MAS DEP standards. However, it's my understanding that that is typical for comprehensive permit applications. Because by nature of the requirements of the comprehensive permit, only preliminary plans are required to be submitted. So my understanding is that it's, it's to not have full hydrologic analyses submitted with comprehensive permits. And we can look more into that to confirm for the, for the board.
Mr. Chairman, my profession is that I'm an attorney, an environmental attorney, and land use attorney, and among other things. I do 40B work, and I currently am representing an applicant for a 40B project down in Bourne. And I can certainly tell you that in that project, my client, the applicant, has been made to submit a full-blown stormwater design, and it has been reviewed in very minute detail for compliance with the MAS DEP performance standards. And quite helpfully, I would add, that review has been helpful to the project design. The project design has changed as a result of it and changed for the better. And I, what's, whatever one's experience might be in various towns with what's normal, my experience in representing applicants for 40B projects is that it is perfectly within the range of normal for the applicant to be asked for, for a full stormwater design and for that to be peer-reviewed for compliance with the MAS DEP performance standards. And I would, as a member of the public, suggest and request that the board request that from this applicant, particularly where this is a project that is coming forward when the town is already, you know, over its 10%. And this is a project that is being brought forward in the, you know, under the umbrella of friendly 40B, where there's supposed to be cooperation and, you know, this isn't a developer coming in and, you know, trying to jam a project down the town's throat, but rather cooperative effort. I certainly think it would be reasonable and helpful to ask for a stormwater design at a sufficient level that the peer reviewer could determine whether the project will meet MAS DEP performance standards for stormwater.
Well, I believe we can require that in our final decision, assuming we go forward with approving the application. But I think at this point in time, I would like to leave the discussion to Messers Buckley and O'Donnell, and be advised by them appropriately at this point in time.
And lastly, Mr. Chairman, unless there are other members of the public who might have questions specifically about stormwater, I did want to, at the appropriate time, follow up on what I had written in my letter of earlier today, which was to request that the board in, in open meeting and in the, in the context of the hearing, discuss and decide upon what is going to be the scope of the peer reviewer's review of the environmental reports. And I know that that meeting is in September, but presumably before September, the board's expectation is that the peer reviewer will have, you know, done his work and peer-reviewed the reports. And, as I indicated in my letter, I think it's important that, you know, this isn't a, when it comes to issues of contamination, this isn't, this isn't like stormwater standards, where, where the peer reviewer can say, does the project comply with, you know, a list of specific performance standards or not? Rather, when it comes to issues of contamination, it's addressing a more fundamental question, which goes right at the heart of what the very purpose of Chapter 40B is, which is to provide safe, affordable housing. And I think the threshold question, to me, the question about this development is whether it is a safe place to build housing. It's surrounded by sites where there was 100 years of heavy industrial use, all manner of stuff being dumped into the ground. None of what was dumped has been removed. There has been no remediation. Whatever went in to the environment at those sites is still in the environment. And the question is only whether that contamination has spread onto the proposed development site, particularly through groundwater.
Let me,
Yep. I don't want to go on and on.
I will discuss with the individual who'll be doing the peer review on that issue. I'll report back to this group at our next meeting as to what the scope of that review will be. And then,
Well, that, may I ask, is that going to be discussed in, in, in hearing? I think it's important that it is, and that the peer reviewer asks the right question. Be asked the right question, which is,
I will discuss with the peer reviewer
Well, I understand that.
what the scope, what he's going to recommend or she's going to recommend.
But while you discuss it with the public,
And then we will discuss it in public at the next meeting.
Mr. Chairman, if I could, if we could have our attorney, Stephanie Kiefer, address the comments on the peer review and what could legally be done under 40B to address Mr. Hoyt's concerns?
May I just want, if I may just add, because it may make the conversation shorter. I understand a peer reviewer only reviews what's been submitted by the applicant. The peer reviewer reviews what's been submitted by the applicant and answers the question, is that information adequate to give the board what it needs to issue an approval? And what the board needs, in this case, is enough information to conclude with confidence that the site is safe to build upon. If the board doesn't have enough information to know that the site is safe to build upon, then the board should deny the project. And that's, that's the bottom line. And that's the whole point of the peer review, is to answer the question. Has the applicant submitted enough information for the board to know that the site is a safe location for housing? And God, I hope we can all agree that if the board doesn't have that information, the board is going to deny this project. But I'll, I'll yield. I've said enough.
Attorney Kiefer?
Barney. Barney?
Dave.
Yes?
I just want to go back to EP, and he mentioned some places in his report. I just want to go back to EP, and he mentioned some places in his report. Do you think he could just send us a bolded list of items that he wanted to reference us to?
Sorry, are you referring to our report?
Yes.
I, I guess I don't understand the question. Can you repeat that once more? Sorry?
Well, you, you mentioned some things in your report, and I'm just asking, can you bullet those items so I can go into your report and read it in detail what you're talking about?
Sure. Yeah, I can highlight the discussion points that we've addressed tonight.
Right, your discussion points. Absolutely. That's it.
Good evening. My name is Stephanie Kiefer, from the law firm of Smallock and Vaughn, here on behalf of-
Actually, Stephanie, to you.
Oh.
To the-
To the microphone.
To the podium, please.
Sure. Good evening. Stephanie Kiefer, on behalf of the applicant, from Smallock and Vaughn in North Andover. Just to briefly kind of touch upon some of the comments that have been raised relative to the, the preliminary stormwater design, that is correct that under 40B preliminary is to be submitted. And part of that is, well, there's two reasons primarily. One, the permitting process for 40B is to be streamlined. It's kind of the, the general standard. It's a streamlined review. That's why it's comprehensive. It's before one board. And also that the, the certain details of it naturally get, get developed as if a project is approved with conditions, and then the final plans are submitted for final review. So there's approved plans, and then there's typically a set of final plans and final reports. And some of that also is because, quite frankly, within the course of these hearings, certain aspects may change and be modified based upon comments that the applicant receives from the board. And so it's, it's not necessarily a good use of resources to fully develop a complete stormwater plan if there's potential that things may change in the future. With respect to the peer review aspect of it, I, I believe that the peer reviewer correctly identified what they saw with it, and the, the import is whether or not there are any significant design flaws that they see that should be developed at this point. But a stormwater to meet mass stormwater standards are state standards. And I'm sure that this board, as any board that wants, if they approve a comprehensive permit, will make it subject to a condition that the project adhere to state and federal rules and regulations and laws. This board is looking at local rules and regulations, but you can condition a project such that it needs to comply and adhere to state. And if, if the project can't meet that standard, then the project doesn't go forward, quite frankly. So it's, it's, the applicant is not trying to avoid meeting state standards. It, it has to meet state standards. I, I think I will somewhat limit the, my response just to that unless there was a, a point that the board had a question on that I could help clarify.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Can we move on to traffic?
Can I just make this one stormwater?
Question?
We don't pay-
You have to turn to a microphone?
Yeah, you got to go up here.
Last time I went up here, it wasn't good. We don't pay for flood insurance. But in 2010, we flooded and had to call the fire department. So I just want to make that. I don't know what flood plane we're in, but we're not required to pay flood insurance, but yet we did flood. And second, I think Mr. Buckley mentioned something about they may not have the capacity for the sewerage. I think that's what he said.
Want me to answer that?
Yeah.
Okay. So in the DPW letter, they said that they did an analysis, or somebody did an analysis of the sewer out there and that, that there's not enough capacity between our site and the pump station in Mansfield. So I called the town engineer and I said, can you send me the data? And to the date, I haven't had it. And then I talked to the DPW director the other day, Chris, when we were talking about the bridge. And I said, you know, can I do the data? You know, and I need to see what you're proposing. So we had a long conversation. I'm just going to give you the dime version. It's, it's, it's an analysis of full buildout, assuming Sharon Woods come, gets into the system. I'm like, well, I don't care about Sharon. They're not in the system yet. You know, my opinion is, is first come, first served. And we're from Foxborough residents, so, you know, let's talk about it. And then the other issue is, you don't necessarily need to upsize the pipe. That is a option. But what you can do is, what, like what Mr. Kraft is doing this evening, his sewer treatment system can't service 60,000 people in one day. So what you do is you put in holding tanks, and then you feed it out over the course of whatever the time period is into the systems in order not overload it. And you can do the same thing with a sewer system. Because as you can imagine, you know, when is the, when is the highest sewer flows? It's from 7:00 in the morning till probably 8:00 or 9:00 at night. So after that, it goes down nothing. So if you're holding your, your flow, let's just pick a number, 10,000 gallon, you have a 10,000 gallon tank, and you have your sewerage going into that tank, and then at 9:00, you turn the pumps on and start feeding that flow into the, your sewer system, you don't have to upsize the pipes because you're using the capacity in an off-time period. That's just a quick and dirty thing. I didn't want to get into it because I don't really know any of the answers because I haven't got any of the data yet. But, you know, we're, we're working the issue. It's an issue. If it's, if it has to be upsized, we'll upsize it.
I mean, if the DPW tells us it's got to be upside, it won't comply.
Well, that actually wasn't my question. So I might have misunderstood what he was saying. I wasn't sure if he meant that the, the town couldn't handle the capacity of sewerage. I just wanted to-
Oh, no. Oh, sorry. No. No, I don't think that's an issue. I think there's plenty of capacity. The sewer department would love to have us tie in because they get huge amounts of money per gallon. So, and they're still trying to pay off their fixed number that they had to pay Mansfield, that we had to pay Mansfield in order to upgrade the sewerage system. So as far as I know, there's a lot of capacity, volume-wise.
I just want, I know that when the Board of Selectmen spoke, it was important to them that anybody on Moore Street that wanted to tie in would be able to tie in if this process was to go through because Moore Street wasn't allowed to tie in at the time that the pipe went through the street. So that was my concern. But I'm, I might have misunderstood what he said.
Yep, okay.
Actually, let me, so Chuck Berry once sang that he was riding along in his automobile with no particular place to go. Gas prices being what they are, I think people more likely than not have particular places to go. If they don't, then as Yogi Berra once said, if you don't know where you're going, you may end up somewhere else. So hopefully we'll get a better sense as to what traffic might be on Moore Street and other roads. And with you.
Lucille, are you saying you want to take a five-minute break?
No.
Okay.
You want to take one phone? If you want to take it now?
Sure.
Okay. So we'll take a five-minute break.
Okay.
Laura's yours.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. All right. So we'll go, we'll do the traffic report now, and we have Jack Gillan from Gillan Associates. And with that, we'll turn it over to-
Thank you. My name's Jack Gillan. I, I'm going to give you a brief introduction. I haven't been before this board in a long time, so I just want to let you know what my background is. And I am a registered professional engineer in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. I, I started traffic engineering around 1971. And I became the Director of Traffic and Parking in Brookline, the Director of Traffic in Quincy, and the Director of Traffic Engineering and Management for the City of Boston. And the traffic consulting engineer for North Park County. And I'm also past president of Institute of Transportation Engineers, New England Section. So I, I've been in traffic for most of my life. And we just prepared this report. And I did get a chance to, to look at the peer review. I'm not going to talk about that initially, but I, I do have some thoughts on that. So we'll just go through the presentation right now if that's your, your direction. Okay. So the first thing we did is, is I hired another traffic county company to go, they, they do that all the time, to go and do the counts for me. They, they did the automatic traffic recorder on Moore Street down adjacent to the site. And that's shown in Figure 3 here, where the daily traffic was about 920 vehicles per day. During the morning peak hour, the northbound traffic is the heavier. As you can see, well, it's kind of hard to see. There's a green line over the blue line in the morning peak hour around 9:00. And there's a predominant southbound movement in the afternoon between 3:00 and 4:00. This way, we were able to get the traffic throughout the day in all the hours so that when we analyzed the peak hours, we knew that there wasn't a different peak in the middle part of the day. Sometimes if you, if you had something with a shift change outside of a, a factory of some kind, sometimes you'd have a different peak and you'd have to analyze this. This shows us that if we looked at the peak hours between 7:00 and 9:00, 4:00 to 6:00, we would capture the, the, the time that should be analyzed. So that's all this shows. And then on the, the following Figure 4, that's the attorney movement counts on the, on the left side that were conducted by that same company on, on the Coccasus Street right at Fairbanks in Moore Street. What they actually did is they had cameras out mounted up on poles. And they had different computers that, they, they read all of the, the videos and they, and they pump out what all the traffic movements are in 15-minute periods between 7:00 and 9:00 in the morning peak hour and between 4:00 and 6:00 in the afternoon. They put the four high consecutive 15-minute peaks together, and that becomes the peak hour that you analyze. So they had done that at both the, they had done that at the, the Coccasus at Moore Street intersection with Fairbanks also being picked up. And then they had done the machine down by the site. I actually did the intersection at the school myself because I wanted to see the operation. So I, I sat back down the road and, and I recorded everything for the, and then the peak for the school arrival was between 8:15 and 9:15 in the morning. And the peak for the school dismissal was between 2:30 and 3:30 in the afternoon. What I did then is as I looked at what those volumes were, and obviously you would understand that the volumes are lower on Moore Street for through, the through movements during those periods because we, we went back, we saw that the middle part of the day, they didn't have as much traffic on Moore Street as it did during the peak hours. So what I did was I balanced the traffic during the arrival and the dismissal because I knew what was going on at, at, at Coccasus at, at Moore Street during the, the peak hours, morning, afternoon. And I knew what I had counted during the arrival and dismissal hours. So what I did is I, and I knew what the ADD was, the, the traffic during the part of the day, so I knew what those hours were. I was able to put fake numbers for the through movements, which were higher than what was actually occurring during, during that, the middle part of the day for the dismissal power, stuff like that. They're not fake, but they're conservative. You know, so we wanted to look at what would happen if school got out later. What would happen if the peak hour in the morning wasn't exactly at the arrival, was overlapping at if. So it was more conservative, but that, that's how I got those numbers for the through movements is I actually counted them, but then I inflated them. Figure 6, that shows what some of the, the state traffic counting stations have shown and as far as the growth. Now, I, I had to assume a, a growth factor for, for two reasons, actually three, but talk about all three. One was during the COVID, traffic volumes really dropped everywhere in the, throughout the country, not just Boston. But we knew what the traffic volumes were from MassDOT for both 2019, prior to COVID, and we can, we know what they were in 2020 during the COVID stream, you know, because they, they were, they were lower in 2020 than they were in 2021. But in the upper right-hand corner, you can, you can see that the, the growth was down 17% between 2019 and 2020. So after I, what I did is I took the counts that we collected this year, and I increased those all right away by 17%, even though it may not last. We just wanted to increase it. So we used the 17% figure, and it was a little bit conservative. And, and that's 17%. Our existing count's up 17%. That's shown on Figures 7 and 8 for both the morning and evening peak hour. And then that, and that was done for, for all through movements on, on Moore Street and, and all the ways down to the south. And then we looked at a different station that showed conservatively a 1% per year growth factor at a Coccasus station that was not on Oakland, but it was, it was further up. So I, I looked at that. It looked like it made sense. So we used the 1% per year over seven years because that's what you do is you take, you don't design for the year that you're trying to get something permitted because it's, you're not going to get it built that fast, you know? So you did, you designed it for seven years out. So these seven years out into the year 2029 for the morning and evening peak hours are shown in Figures 9 to 10. Now, then we have to add our traffic from the project onto it. And the way we do that is the Institute of Transportation Engineers puts out a trip generation report, a manual, and, and they have different types of uses, whether it's a store, whether it's a car wash or Dunkin' Donuts, or, and this here is, is housing. And we look at the housing, and we look for the 52 units. You're based on, the, the projection is based on the use and the size. So Figure 11 shows that this particular housing would generate about 26 trips in the morning peak hour with six inbound and 20 outbound. And in the afternoon, it would generate about 33 trips with 21 inbound and, and 12 outbound. And that the trips over the course of a whole weekday would be about 350 with 126 inbound and 126 outbound over the 24 hours. Now, I, I do notice that the trip generation manual had been updated between the time I had originally written this report and, and now. So they, they went from a 12th, a 10th edition to a 11th edition. And I do have that now. And I looked at the numbers. I just didn't have time to respond. We will show that it's a minor, it's a minor, very minor. I, it wouldn't make a difference at all in the calculations, but I will update the report to reflect that. The other sheet, 12, the Figure 12, that shows a, a trip assignment. Like, once you have your trips, you have to decide, well, how much are you going to assign to the north, to the south, to the east, to the west? And, and that way there, you know what the impact may be on intersections that are north, south, east, and west of the site. So I, I, I looked at it, and like we saw in the ATR, the, it showed a heavier direction going towards the north in the morning and then coming back there in, in the afternoon. And, but mostly it was, it was fairly well-balanced, like 50/50 during the middle part of the day and all that. But I decided that if I'm going to analyze the intersection of Coccasus at Morris, I don't want to underestimate that. So instead of using the 50/50, I used a 75 to the north and 25% to the south so that if I analyze it under the worst condition, it'll obviously work under a, a better condition. But I did take a quick peek and, and say, well, what happens if they, the assignments went from a 75%, I assumed to north, and it's down to a 50%? It's not going to matter. The northbound goes from 10, from 15 and going northbound in the morning with the 75% down to 10, going northbound with the 50%. And southbound, it goes from a 5 coming in, in the morning, down to a 3. And so the calculations aren't going to change with, with that type of a change. And in the afternoon peak hour, it's, it's pretty much the same thing. The northbound movement would go from about a 9 down to a 6, and the southbound movement would go from a 16 down to a, down to an 11. So again, the changes, we can argue about the assignments and all that. It, the impact is not going to be anything that would be measurable and noticeable to the residents of, of Foxborough. So again, we, we, we analyzed the school driveway in the middle part of the afternoon when this, when this was getting up between 2:30 and 3:30 because that's when you had the driveway volumes. But for the through movements that we were measuring it against, those were the inflated evening peak hour volumes balanced on the, what we knew was coming out of Coccasus Street and going back to the north. So that's how we got those higher inflated numbers. And then the levels of service, you do a capacity calculations with the, I do have the latest trafficware syncro software and stuff like that. So the difference in levels of service didn't, didn't really change between the base and the projected. And the, and the, the delay, I, I, I didn't write it all down, but I, I can do that. And I will, I will do that to, to, to show the incremental difference of what the, the delay and, and the volume to capacity ratio would be. Sometimes we do that, sometimes we don't, but that'll all be done. And then I had a radar gun that I, I sat in the driveway of the south of the, where the site is now, and I recorded the traffic speed going northbound and going southbound. southbound on Moore Street. And that's shown in figure eighteen. And it was slightly different. Northbound was an average of thirty-two and a, and a eighty-fifth percentile or design speed of thirty-eight. And in the southbound, the average was thirty-four and the eighty-fifth percentile was thirty-nine. So when I looked at what we would need, what kind of calculations, I did it based on the, uh, the highest speed being the thirty-nine miles per hour and stuff like that. As far as the site distance go, I, I noticed that they'd like to see a, and I'll let them speak for it, but I, I, I'm asked to provide a, a site distance diagram showing what is required, what is provided, and, and using the two feet as a, as a target, you know? So we'll, we'll, we'll take a look at all of that. On, on figure nineteen, we get into the, the crashes. Now Mast Dot has a crash portal where they show where the crashes are and, and then we, they have the, like the spreadsheet that's all in text, what, what the type of accident was, where it was, the time of day, what was the collision like and things like that. So I looked at the years 2017, eighteen and nineteen. The reason I did that is that I wanted to get three consecutive years pre-COVID, you know? Because I figured if I look at during the COVID and there were fewer crashes, I don't know if that's representative that the crashes not occurred because it was less volume. Or do they, you know, I don't want to average it in because there, there wasn't that, that much traffic out there. So obviously a traffic rate during the COVID years is going to be different than the traffic rate during the others, but not necessarily so because if speeds, if, if the volume's way, way down and you had the same number of, of crashes, then the rate actually would be up. So it's, it's something, I, I understand what your, your peer review is looking at and we could do that. The other thing is I looked at the crashes that were out at our site. One was somebody hit a deer in the middle of the night and someone else hit a, a guardrail, you know? So those are ran off road, hit fixed objects, stuff like that. You don't know what happens and stuff like that. It wasn't, it wasn't that occurred at the site, but you will take it. And I, I, I understand what the consultant's always saying is that if other crashes did occur, why don't we take a look at them and see what they were, where they occurred? Why? And, and so they asked if we take a look at, they didn't say it, but they said the more crashes, which, which, which infers that the COVID years should be looked at and that as well. So I will do that, you know? So that's, that's pretty much it, is, is that the, you do have the capacity of the roadway and, and they wanted to know more about amenities like bicycles and pedestrians and some places, they, they, we can take a look at that, but there's no sidewalks right in front of the site and there's about twenty-two feet of pavement there. So I, I, I did take a look at the, the consultant's list and the thing that, and we may end up choosing different stations from the state as far as, you know, well, should we use a seventeen, should we use a fifteen, should we use a one percent per year, should we use a one and a half percent per year? I'd like to be able to talk with you and then come back to you. And this is where we agreed, like Billy said, and this is where we didn't agree, and, and let you guys kind of figure out what, what's important and what wouldn't change the end result anyways, you know? So that's, that's in a nutshell.
I'll get to you, okay? So let me, just so I didn't miss it, you're projecting three hundred and fifty-two daily trips?
Daily trips. That includes half in and half out.
Now, what about, is that just for the residents or you, or are you talking about?
Everything.
FedEx trucks and Amazon?
Includes the guy coming in to cut the grass and includes the guy coming in from, from Amazon, you know, you know, one of the deliveries, UPS or anything, you know? It doesn't matter that this is the type of trip. We look at trips nationwide, different units, different types, and all the trips accounted, passenger cars, pickup trucks, and, and they're all thrown into this. You analyze it based on the peak hours. You don't analyze on the total daily trips because, you know, you could have traffic in the, the two o'clock in the morning, no one's going to, you know, to be impacted by that. So you look at the morning and evening peak hour and, and analyze those, those periods of the day.
And I assume the projection is based on a generally accepted methodology in, in your business?
I'm sorry?
The methodology to come up with that number of trips?
Yeah.
It's a standard for the industry?
Yeah, it's, 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 uh, this is the way that the profession does it, this is the way the state requires it, this is what the, the courts require if they're reviewing the case, yes.
Now, what did you believe that initially at seventy-five percent would be going, say, towards Coccasette Street as opposed to towards Mansfield?
Well, I, I knew based on the counts that it was slightly higher northbound in the morning peak hour, and obviously if those traffic, that traffic goes in the morning, it goes back at night, you know? Because you could see the, the evening peak hour was higher from the southbound direction, okay? So that's why I didn't use the fifty-fifty right away. But I was afraid that if I used a sixty-forty or whatever the number calculated ought to be in, I may not have taken into account that some of the people that live here will shoot up Morse, take a left, take a right on Oak and jump on the ninety-five further up rather than be stuck in traffic down to the south, you know? Or, or maybe they'll choose to go to a, a commuter rail station that, that's further north than, than south so that they get in the car sooner and making other trips on the way home. So I was trying to make it more conservative by using the seventy-five versus the twenty-five, but like I just said, it didn't matter anyways. You're talking, you know, like, like nine cars versus six or something like that, you know? The, the, the calculations wouldn't have yielded a different level of service, you know?
Any other questions here?
No questions.
Dave, any questions?
Yes, I actually have two, I guess, or one in the comment. I'm wondering if our, if he could respond to the letter written by Environmental Partners July nineteenth, which has some comments and some, I guess, suggestions. Maybe he could put something together and send it to us in writing?
I, I definitely will do that. I, I, I want Environmental Partners to be able to talk to you and see what they're, but absolutely, I started doing that this afternoon. I got these, I got these around two o'clock, you know? So, so we started doing a few things there.
Yeah. The, the second thing, Bonnie, has to do with the timing of some of this material coming in.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, you know, a couple of things came in this afternoon. Um, one from Attorney Hoyt, I believe, and the other from Environmental Partners. It's very difficult to go through that and digest it with just hours of notice. And maybe we could somehow require or motivate these types of materials being sent in several days before the next hearing?
Yeah, this is, not to pick on you or, or to pick on Dylan, but it, it's always an issue with us when we request something in writing. We'd like to have it at best a week before a, you know, a hearing. So, you know, Dylan, I realize the pressure that you're under, but if you could, you know, in the future, try to utilize that as a, as a guidepost. I didn't have a chance to, to spend much time on this, you know, myself today because I was, I was away until about three thirty, so then I was trying to, you know, to rush through it. So if in the future you could, you know, you could try to get stuff to us a week in advance, that would be very helpful.
As you know, I've been in the public sector for twenty-five years, so I can appreciate what you're going through. Now, the only thing is that we'd like to, you know, meet with or talk with or correspond with and get a clear direction that both you're consulting and we can agree to, and then get that all done and in writing and reviewed before the meeting, you know?
So is that all right, Mr. Chairman, as similar to the discussions we had earlier? Is if Mr. Gillen could talk to Environmental Partners directly with?
Absolutely. With staff members? You know, I'm sure, you know, Dylan's going to have some comments anyhow, but absolutely.
Great, thank you.
Uh, Dave, anything else?
No, that's it, Bonnie.
Okay, Kim?
Yes, thank you, I do have a question. Well, I guess first a comment, I am very interested to hear once the, the two parties had a chance to talk a little bit more about pedestrians and bikers, very curious about that. And, but my question is, where is the closest sidewalk to the site?
I'm sorry, could you repeat that?
Where is the closest sidewalk to the site?
So if, if you were coming down Coccasette and making a right turn on Morse, the Borough School will be on the left, and I forgot the street, the first street on the left.
Morse Place.
It ends around there. So it's maybe?
Half a mile.
Half a mile? So basically from the Coccasette-Morse intersection to Morse Place, it's about a half a mile total?
It's about half a mile and the same in the other direction.
Plus and minus.
Toward Mansfield.
On the left-hand side, same side as the school.
Okay.
Bonnie, I, I believe there may be sidewalk in Mansfield?
Yes, it's about a half a mile.
I'm not sure how, you know, you think it's about half a mile?
Yes.
But yes, there's sidewalk in Mansfield. But, but between Morse Place and where it begins in Mansfield, there's no sidewalk.
And to have a sidewalk, how many extra feet are required in of the, I know it's the roadway and the sidewalk, but how many extra feet are required?
Width-wise?
Yes.
Typically in Foxborough, typically in Foxborough, the sidewalk is five feet, which lets the plows do their job when they plow. And then you'd have to have a curbing, which if it was like a bitumenous curbing, might be another foot. So you need another six feet or so.
And in order to put sidewalks in, Kim, we would have eminent domain proceedings.
Right. Right, okay, thank you.
Dylan, I'll turn it over to you. Oh no, Jane, I guess, right?
Yes, hi, thank you. Um, regarding, sorry, I just want to apologize that you just got the letter today. We are happy to provide our responses to you and with as much advanced notice as you need. We just found out about this hearing a little over a week ago, so we typically ask for about two weeks to be able to, to properly review and prepare before a hearing. So if you would like it a week in advance, it would probably be three weeks before the hearing. I know that that's not always possible, but I just wanted to mention, you know, that we are, we're happy to do that, we just need a little bit of notice to be able to, to provide that. And so regarding the, the traffic report that we reviewed, I think our biggest comment was probably the distribution that has already been discussed. We felt that the twenty-five percent to the south didn't really seem sufficient, given that, you know, there's Mansfield Center and the MBTA commuter rail station and anyone that would want to access I-95 southbound or I-495 would want to go south into Mansfield. So, you know, our recommendation was, I, I know it's not in Foxborough, but to, to study the intersection and intersection to the south, and that would likely be the County Street at North Main Street and Angel Street in Mansfield, since most of the, most if not all of the trips that are headed southbound would, would travel through that intersection. I, I understand the point that, you know, when you're studying the intersection to the north, the distribution, you know, it's, it's, it is pretty minimal if you're taking away, but it does feel like there's something missing by not, by not studying intersections to the south as well. So that was our, kind of our, our big comment on the trip distribution. The, the COVID-19 methodology that was discussed, you know, that was something that we, we've had to do for the last couple of years and thankfully that's, that's kind of over, it's, it's not exactly an exact science. But our comment was that those, that COVID-19 adjustment was taken from twenty nineteen to twenty twenty, and these, the counts that were collected for this, for this project were taken in March of this year. And in March of this year, traffic levels had basically reached pre-pandemic levels in most places. So adding an additional seventeen percent onto counts that were taken in March of this year, like, we're assuming that that's, that's overestimating the existing traffic that is on the roadway. And while that is conservative, and typically that's not necessarily a bad thing, when you're looking at the impacts of a project and you're comparing, you know, you're going to project that number to the future and then you're going to, you're going to compare your no-bill to your billed, that number of trips is going to have less of an impact on a bigger number than it would in a small number. So we were just, you know, recommending that they look at the COVID adjustment for March and see, it may not even be necessary, to be perfectly honest, to see and adjust the volumes accordingly for that. And for the one percent growth rate, we, we agree that that's, that's a typical growth rate that's typically, it's used in, in a lot of places, but we usually provide backup to, to support that. And the backup that they had was from a count station that didn't really have enough information. They only had traffic volumes for, I, I forget what year it was, maybe twenty nineteen or twenty seventeen. It was only for one year. And Mast Dot themselves don't recommend using their estimated growth rates that they have on their website. They, they prefer to see an actual adjustment between, a, a growth rate that's been calculated between two different years of collected data. So we were just recommending that they look at a different count station or just talk to the town of Foxborough or Mansfield or the local NPO just to, to, you know, one percent could be perfectly fine, but it could be more, it could be less, and we'd just like some sort of backup to, to justify that one percent growth rate. And then we also asked that they coordinate with the towns regarding any additional, like any other planned developments in the area or roadway projects that might impact the traffic in the future, any of the study intersections. Our comments on the trip generation were pretty minor. I think with the eleventh, the newer addition of the, of IT, and that is standard methodology, I think they're actually a little lower. So we didn't really have anything to say about that. And it's not, it's not a significant amount of vehicles. You're talking about, I mean, thirty vehicles or less during the peak hours. And, you know, if you equate that over the hour, you're, you're talking about like one vehicle every two minutes. So it's not, it's not a giant amount of trips. So we didn't really have a lot of, a whole lot of comments on the trip generation. As far as the traffic analysis goes, you know, everything that I've discussed will impact the traffic analysis. So we just wanted to see some revised traffic analysis to see how that, if, if it changes the traffic analysis at all. We agree with the provided analysis that it doesn't seem that there will be significant impacts and that there is additional capacity at the, the intersections and the, all the operations look to be acceptable. But again, we'd want to see that, that updated analysis to, to really, to be able to verify that. And again, we don't know if we are adding an additional study intersection to the south. We, we have no idea what those traffic operations are, if it's operating over capacity. So that's additional information that we would, that we would want to look at to determine, you know, what the impacts of the project are in that intersection to the south. And reviewing the crash data, it, it doesn't appear that there is a significant number of crashes in the area that would indicate a specific safety concern, but we did ask that they put a little more information in their summary table. And as far as the crash rates go, we, we wouldn't recommend doing them, sorry, during the, um, the COVID years, we would recommend just up to twenty nineteen, which is, I believe, still considered existing with Mast Dot as of now. Just, you know, it's pretty standard practice to be able to compare a crash rate at an intersection and say it is or it isn't below the, the state and district averages. Anything higher than the, the state or district average would indicate a safety concern. As far as the site plans go for traffic, we, we just requested that the applicant put, provide turning templates to, to, to show for emergency and refuse vehicles, to make sure that they can properly access the site. And then also site triangles to make sure that any potential obstructions are, are maintained below the appropriate height so as not to impede the site distance from the driveway. There was no on- or off-site mitigation proposed, you know, within the document. So, you know, our recommendation is just coordination with the town and, and, you know, identifying any appropriate mitigation measures that are commensurate, commensurate with the impacts of the project. We're not, you know, suggesting that you put sidewalk along all of Moore Street or anything like that, but, you know, I think I saw a comment from the school or something about providing sidewalk for, you know, students waiting for the bus or something like that. So there might be some, some minor mitigation measures that could be made just to, you know, once, once the, the final impacts of the project have been determined to kind of coordinate with the towns, both towns, as far as mitigation goes.
Thank you, I, I appreciate the comments. We'll consider them, but we'll also talk with the team the whole bit and get back to you in writing, but I'd also like to meet with them or talk with them and, and, and agree on a scope and some of the, some of the assumptions that we make and, and I don't have a problem with that. I, I, I don't, I'd go back to you as far as whether we go south and analyze off of Mansfield and, and what else. And, you know, it's, it's like, I had looked down there at that intersection guard about seven, eight, nine years ago, and the traffic down there between the trucks and the commuter traffic and it, it, it seems like it would be overkill to go down and, and study Mansfield Center, you know, for, for this type of project. But I'm not answering that tonight, I will look at it and, and talk to the team.
I mean, not everybody's going to go to Mansfield Center, you might take You might take a right turn out and go to Spring and County Streets and, and use that as access to whatever direction you want to go. So, so it's not necessarily just, you know, heading to the center of Mansfield to go to a restaurant. So I, I've got a question. Actually, let me ask Judy if she has any questions.
No, I don't, Mr. Chair. I'm just listening with great interest to this whole discussion about traffic, so I'm fine for now.
Okay, thank you. And I'm not sure, I'm not sure how to phrase this. So we've got, at present, 918, 920 field trips on Morse Street. And you're projecting another 352, so it's more than a third. Is there a, and this is both for you and, and, you know, Ms. Davis, is there a time at which a road can no longer handle traffic capacity? And when does that tipping point occur? When I say no longer handle it, obviously you can always have cars going, but no longer safely and adequately, you know, handle it?
In my professional opinion, Morse Street can accommodate the small amount of traffic that we're going to be generating, in my opinion. But I, we'll, we'll try to, we'll cross the Ts and dot the Is and, and meet with you.
Ms. Davis, any thoughts in that regard?
Um, yeah, I, I think that's typically, you know, we, we typically look to the intersections on either end just because that's where the queues are going to back up. It's the queues that people are going to be concerned about waiting and delay. And so that's, you know, and the intersection to the north was studied, but the intersection to the south wasn't. And that's why we would, we would say, you know, to look at those and see if there are queues, how far back those queues go and how long the delay is.
Okay. You had a question, correct? Can you? And tell us who you are, please.
Hi, Jessica Uth, 71 Morse Street. So first of all, thank you for letting me talk. Secondly, just to address it, when the gentleman was speaking, he mentioned a bunch of crashes and then, you know, kind of flippantly said something about a deer and something about a guardrail. My property has been hit twice. Once a power pole was taken down for three days and another time the person spun out in the front of my yard and took out the entire fence. So I've only lived here for a little under seven years, and it's happened twice already. And I can tell you from just walking, you know, the neighborhood with my dog, that people are going that 40 pretty consistently and they're not moving. There's no sidewalk. It is very dangerous. And I know that that sounds, it's almost, from my, from my perspective, it's less about the number of cars and more about the actual safety. We don't feel as a neighborhood that we can go out and go for a run or go for a walk or enjoy our neighborhood. We don't have that. And we're terrified that if you get another 300, 400 cars in there, that it's, it's just going to keep getting worse. In fact, 35% worse. And so, you know, if I have to wait a couple of extra minutes in an intersection, that's, that's okay, fine. But I, at the end of the day, you're asking for the residents to give up the ability to use their neighborhood. You're asking for these new residents to kind of onboard this level of risk by not being able to leave their little fishbowl, right? They can't walk to the commuter station. They can't walk to the burrow, right? And they're within reasonable distance if there was a safe, like, safe sidewalks. There's a way to do it. I don't, like, I'm on the other side of Morse Place. I, I am barely without the sidewalk, right? I'm like two houses away from the sidewalk. And I can tell you that 50 feet, 60 feet between my front door and that sidewalk, I mean, when I am walking my son, we are literally in the bushes, trying to avoid getting hit some days. And that's, I wish I were exaggerating. It's not safe. We have a little blinker thing for his backpack during the daytime because we're terrified that we're going to get hit. And this is just going to make that worse. And that's why I keep writing in about the sidewalks, because that, well, that makes all the difference here. Right? Like, yes, we're all concerned about the number of houses that are going in there. 52 is a lot of houses on six acres. I sit on two acres with one house. And I'm not saying that we need to, you know, figure that out. But the, the conservation land, the environment, the fact that our safety is now at risk, like, I'm really struggling to see what the benefit to the town is if the existing residents are being asked to give up their safety for it. That's it. Thank you.
Actually, I'm going to, Joan's had her hand up, so I'm going to get her. Joan? You're on mute.
On mute, okay.
Joan Gallivan.
Okay, Joan Gallivan, Nine Can of Forge Drive. I'm wondering, we're getting into the details of a lot of things here that you'll be trying to deal with. And I'm going to sort of backtrack a little. I wondered if there's, how do I get in the screen? If, if, if we're going to reject this, that we haven't, we've already met our 40B minimum, it just seems like that maybe we should decide, you know, making a determination here, are we going to be able to get this developer to, to change this project that much? Because it just seems like there's a lot of sentiment in town, as well as the neighbors there, that this is just too much on too small and too much of an environmental, you know, site. But, but, you know, that it is someone's land, they own it, and they should have some rights. But I'm bringing this in under the 40B and being voluntary and friendly. I just can't see them trying to make this project what we would like to have it be, something much, much less. So I'm, I'm just wondering about that as we go on and on and on. Is there going to be, if we have the right to, to reject this outright because of that? I think it's been brought up a number of times. So I'd like to kind of make sure that's okay for the developer, that he's willing to hopefully substantially radically reduce this project or make it what some townspeople feel, especially the neighbors and other people that care about this, right to use the land, but believe that this, we've met our, our goals. Now, there are some projects that are coming up. I think that should be looked at, the Wall Street, there's the Firehouse, the Foxborough Housing Authority. There's other projects that Mr. Buckley has mentioned, blend with this and, you know, some, some other developments, maybe small. But this, this added housing and a lot of this, especially the Housing Authority, has a possibility of a number of, you know, qualified housing there for, for the, yeah, sort of the affordable housing and, and for seniors. And then seniors being able to move in if there's 200 or 150, whatever it may be, they're not sure. I mean, that might open up smaller housing. They might be selling their houses to move in there or, you know, it just, or some other housing would, would open up if the seniors are going there. So I'm just thinking that's something that we've met our 40B and whether we're going to be addressing that. I do have a little bit that I wanted to say about the traffic that I think is important. So I, that was this, sort of a presentation I wanted to make last time, but I never did. So I was sort of backtracking on that. But on the traffic part of it, I personally have built a commercial site. And I think we just watched Wall Street. And I think that, I don't know what group it is, but it's probably the planning board, that should be aware of what is going to go over that road, that tiny little road. Now we're seeing it's going to be a 16-foot bridge as opposed, I mean, a 20-foot bridge as opposed to a 16-foot bridge. But there's that little road that's only one way. In other words, you just go in and nobody else can come out, the way it's set up now. How you expect the construction to go on? That alone will destroy the land there. The entrance, the bridge, I'm telling you, the construction, I've done it myself, it is phenomenal. The size of the trucks, the numbers of the trucks, whether it's wet out or it's, you know, they're moving off of the driveway into the grass on a wet day or what. But I'm just saying there's just, it's going to destroy what's there because there's not an adequate entrance. So there's just a lot about this traffic thing that I think even before we get to see anything built, you're going to have a lot of problems there. And I don't see how they're managing to manage, especially even the traffic for construction, never mind when people live there eventually. So I'm, I'm just addressing some of this. And, and I do believe, I, I know quite a bit about the traffic for construction. As I say, if you try to analyze that daily up there at Wall Street, you'd see how, how much difficulty they do have. All right, so take a look at that if you can. I don't know whether the planning board gets an opportunity or how, how that would be looked at, but thank you.
Let me just say this, Joan, in response. As I said before, we will fully analyze, consider, vet the application as it's been presented. We'll make the decision ultimately that we believe is appropriate under the circumstances. Now, obviously, the representatives of the applicant are here. If they feel that in any respect the project needs to be scaled back, I'm sure that will be discussed by them. But unless and until that happens, we have an application that we will consider fully and in detail. And again, and I'll say for the third time, we'll make the decision that we feel is appropriate under the circumstances.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions?
A clarifying comment. So.
Wait, wait, wait. Don't talk till you get there.
Kathy Vandenboom, 109 Morse. So as far as the traffic study, I just wanted to, I know there's some people here from Spring Street, so I just wanted to make sure that it's noted that when, when I leave my house, if I'm going to go to 95 North or 495 North, I'm going to take Spring or to the high school or to my son's best friend's house on Spruce Street.
Right, you said that in your email last night.
I did, I did, but they didn't hear it, so I thought I'd share. That Spring Street is the street that, that people are taking. And that street is extremely long and has no sidewalks until you almost get to County Street. So for the people who are here from Spring Street, I just wanted to point out that when we say that if people exit the development and go towards Mansfield, it's unlikely that people are going to go through the, the density of Mansfield to get to 95 North or 495 North.
You ready for waivers?
Yes, sir.
I was going to sort of segue into it. So if you just bear with me. If I was asked to summarize our zoning bylaw, I could do it in three words. And it deals with districts, uses, and dimensions. So let me just try to explain. So we divide the town up into several different zoning districts. There's the R-40 district where all of us, and I'm sure all of you reside. And then we have the general industrial district. And we have the S-1 special use district, which takes care of a significant part of Route 1. And it goes on and on, neighborhood business, limited industrial, the R-15. And then we have various overlay districts. You know, for example, the Foxborough Center Overlay District and the Water Resource Protection Area Overlay District. And we determine what uses are permissible and not permissible in each of these zoning districts. And some uses are permissible by right. For example, in the R-40, you can build a single-family home by right. Some uses require a special permit. And then we talk about the issue of if there's an overlay district, such as the Water Resource Protection Overlay District, then certain uses that are allowed otherwise may no longer be allowed and other uses may require a special permit. Finally, we have dimensions. How close a structure can be to its side yard? How much frontage the property must have? What's the rear yard? The zoning board is allowed to grant variances. For example, if a homeowner wants to extend his or her house into the side yard boundary, we can grant a variance. If we determine the variance is authorized, a homeowner can encroach upon that side block, side yard requirement. If we deny it, doesn't mean the homeowner can't extend the home. They just can't encroach upon the, upon the, the boundary, upon the line. So, so what does that have to do with what we're considering? We can't grant use variances. For example, the general industrial district allows uses such as manufacturing facilities and warehouses and retail establishments and restaurants. But we can't grant a use variance to allow a residential structure there, whether it's single-family or such as the one we're, we're considering. The comprehensive permit mechanism, however, allows the board to grant waivers from various requirements of the zoning bylaw and other town regulations that otherwise would prohibit or restrict what's being requested. And these are essentially exemptions from the specific provisions of the zoning bylaw or the wetland bylaw or what have you. They're not variances. They don't require the strict criteria of a variance. But in essence, they act in the same way. So there have been a number of waivers that the applicant has requested. And ultimately, we need to decide whether they're warranted or not. Obviously, if we turn them all down, there's not going to be any development here. With that, though, I'm going to turn over to Mr. Caspar just to outline what the various waivers are. We're not going to make any decision relative to them. It's just a discussion to enlighten us and enlighten you as to what's being requested.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just, I'm going to give a little segue as well.
Segue into a segue? A Ronnie segue?
Yours is fine. We've, over the years, have had many.
Speak into the microphone, Bill, getting the signal.
Thank you. Over the years, we've had many 40Bs in front of us. And as being the zoning enforcement officer for the town for 20 years, I would have a, an applicant, or you would have an applicant submitting a 40B application in front of you with a list of waivers. And many of those requests for an exemption or a waiver, the requests would be, would basically say any and all applicable waivers that would apply for this project. And there would be as many as 30 or 40. And it would just be a list that would be nonspecific. And you would send it to my desk and have me review them and then make comment to the board. And it was torturous because it didn't, most of them didn't apply to the project. It was just a broad brush and let's see what sticks.
I'm glad you said torturous because that was on my list of a word to use tonight, so you beat me to it.
But, you know, we, we chuckle and say, you know, maybe 15 or 16 of them would really apply to bulk height dimensional setbacks for that particular project. So with that said, I think I had a little insight into how the board would like to see these and what were specific to this particular project. So I was trying to be, these are what are going to apply to the specific project. And as you pointed out, this is in a general industrial zone, which allows most industrial uses, if we go to Table 3.5, it'll, it's a very intensive zoning district, that and the S-1 district. It allows multiple commercial, non-residential uses by right. But I'm going to clarify that because it happens to be in a water resource district. So if you look at that overlay district, it automatically puts them in a special permit format. So with that said, I was. So with that said, I was specific to ask for waivers that would allow this project to go through in that district for residential uses, which are not permitted in a general industrial zoning district. So if the board would like, I think I came up with, there were roughly 14 waivers. Not all residential, but most of them are. So if the board would want me to be very specific and go over these, we did put them on the screen for you. I can go over each one and why they're in there if they would prefer that.
Yeah, just in summary quickly, sure.
Okay. So, and I gave the exact section of the bylaw and why I was, why we were requesting them. So I'll read them, and then please stop me if you've got any specific questions. The first one was Section 3, Use Regulations, Table 3.1, Table of Use, Use Group G, Residential Number 4. Multifamily dwellings, multifamily dwellings are not permitted within the general industrial G1 zoning district. An exemption from this section is requested to allow the construction of 10 four-unit multifamily dwellings on a lot. So requesting that that one, did the board waive that? Section 3, Use Regulations, Table 3-1, Table of Use, Use Group G, Residential Number 5. Two-family dwellings are not permitted within the general industrial G1 zoning district. An exemption from this section is requested to allow the construction of six two-family dwellings on the lot. Number 3, Section 3-0, Use Regulations, Table 3-1, Table of Use, Use Group L, Accessory Uses Number 4. Residential garages do not exceed 1 1/2 stories in height and a footprint not to exceed 225 square feet are not allowed, are not permitted within the general industrial zoning district. An exemption is requested to allow the construction of two residential garages on the lot.
Let me just stop you. We are not using stories anymore, so we're using feet, and I think it's 21 feet.
It could be when...
No, it is.
When this was originally put in front of the board. There is another Section 2 that says where garages and with multifamilies require...
Yeah, we changed everything, I think, Bill. Bill Buckley.
Originally.
Two stories to feet, so that's just a minor change.
So, number 4. This one is, that's, this particular table is, contradicts itself. It's, again, the language, I'm gonna use the word torturous to get through. It contradicts itself several times within the table. But since I've had to apply it over the years when making determinations, I've used this, it's worked, so bear with me on this one. But Section 4-0, Dimensional Regulations, Section 4.1.1, and Table 4-1, Dimensional Regulations for Uses in Residential and Neighborhood Business District. Section 4.1.1 states, "All residential structures shall conform to dimensional regulations set forth in Table 4-1." Table 4-1 states that multifamily dwellings require 32,250 square feet of area for the first three dwelling, first three units, and 6,125 square feet of area for each additional unit, and no more than eight dwelling units are allowed on a lot," and it's Note 2. The required area for 40-unit complex would be 258,875 square feet. The total area for the parcel is 276,360 square feet. Additionally, Table 4-1 requires 15,000 square feet of area for each two-family dwelling. The required area for six two-family dwellings would be 90,000 square feet. Therefore, the total required buildable area for the 52 dwelling units would be 348,875 square feet, which is 72,515 square feet less than the required minimum area. An exemption is requested for this section to allow the construction of the dwellings on the lot. 5, Section 4.0, Dimensional Requirements. Section 4.1.4, One Dwelling Per Lot. Section 4.1.4 states, "Only one dwelling structure shall be located on a lot unless otherwise expressly permitted by these bylaws. An exemption is requested for this section for number of dwelling structures to be a total of 16 on the lot." 6, Section 6.1, General Regulations. Section 6.1, Off-Street Parking and Loading Requirements. Section 6.1.9, Locations. Section 6.1.9.3 states, "Parking spaces shall be arranged as not to permit backing of vehicles onto any street." The site has two parking areas with four spaces each, which allow for backing onto the street. An exemption is requested from this section. Section 6.1, 6.0, General Regulations. Section 6.4, Screening, Buffering, and Landscaping. Section 6.4.2, Applicability States, "Screening, Buffering, and Landscaping shall be required for all multifamily structures." Section 6.4.4, Waivers or Modifications States, "Screening and buffering requirements may be waived or modified by the appropriate board if natural dense vegetation area, suitable topography, or a combination of the exist, of two exist at the time of development and is to be maintained within the area where screening and buffering are required." A waiver is requested from this section. 8, Section 6.0, General Regulations. Section 6.5, Performance Standards. Exemptions requested under Section 6.5 for the performance standards not met and the planning board review. 9, Section 9.4, Water Resource Protection Overlay District. Section 9.4.9, Use Regulations for All Resource Areas, Special Permit Uses. Section 9.4.9.2 states, "Any non-residential or multifamily use that will render impervious area than 15% or 2,500 square feet, whichever is greater, over the portion of the lot within the Water Resource Protection District. An exemption from this section is requested as the lot is within the future Act for Protection Overlay District and the development will exceed 2,500 square feet of impervious lot coverage. The special permit granting authority for uses within the overlay, Water Resource Overlay District is the planning board." 10, Administration and Procedures. Section 10.1, Zoning Enforcement. The building commissioner is charged with enforcement of Chapter 275, which is the zoning bylaw, and shall not issue any permits unless the plans for the building and the intended use thereof is all, in all respects fulfill the provisions of these bylaws. Under an improved comprehensive permit, violations of the zoning is anticipated and exemptions of these violations are required. An exemption is requested under Section 10.1 for the administration enforcement of Chapter 275 zoning. So we're requesting that that section be exempted. Code of the Town of Foxborough, Chapter 115, Earth Removal. Section 115.3 Procedures. Section 115.3 states, "No earth shall be removed from any parcel of land within the town to another parcel, either within or without the town, except upon approval of a special use permit by the board." An exemption is requested under Section 115.3 for a special use permit from the Board of Selectment for the removal of, from the site of soil, loam, and sand and gravel. Code of Town of Foxborough, Chapter 267, Wetlands Protection, Foxborough Wetlands Protection Regulations. Chapter 267, Wetlands Protection. Section 267.11, Rules and Regulations. Section 267.11 states, "The Conservation Commission shall promulgate rules and regulations to effectuate the purpose of this bylaw." An exemption to Chapter 267 is requested for the filing of a notice of intent within the Conservation, within the Conservation Commission for the implementation of Wetlands Protection Rules and Regulations. 13, Code of Town of Foxborough, Chapter 88, Building Demolition. Section 88.3 Procedures. Upon receipt of an application for the demolition permit for a building over 75 years old as determined by the building commissioner in reliance upon assessors' records and pertinent documents, the building commissioner shall forward a copy thereof to the commission. Section 88-3B states, "It shall within 30 days submit a preliminary recommendation regarding and granting of a demolition permit." An exemption from Section 88-3 is requested for the submittal of a demolition permit to the Foxborough Histar Commission for Review. It's only one building on that property, it's a garage. Other local bylaw regulations and approvals. Exemptions from any and all chapters of the Code of Foxborough, Town of Foxborough, and any and all local bylaws, regulations, approvals necessary to allow the construction and occupancy of 52 residential dwelling units and related improvements at 119 Moore Street. That's it.
So let me just make a couple of comments. Number one, relative to the wetlands, we can waive local requirements, we can't waive state requirements. I think that's been made clear by Ms. Kiefer earlier. Number two, as far as item number 10 or request number 10, what we've generally done as far as waiver of Section 10.1 is to grant that with regard to the administration enforcement of the zoning bylaw with respect to the granted waivers. Number three is, inasmuch as we were talking earlier about floodplains, we have floodplain regulations. We probably need to take a look at what may need to be waived there. Again, we can't waive state or federal requirements.
Correct.
But we do have local requirements that we need to look at. And number four.
Number three, wetland, I'm sorry, number three...
Floodplain was three.
Number three, floodplain. We didn't request the waiver of floodplain.
No, you didn't, but I'm saying we may need to...
Check it out.
We may need to add to your requested waivers.
I...
Because we do have local floodplain regulations.
Yes, 9.3, and I didn't request that because it's, the floodplain is a federal, that's a federal requirement under FEMA. And the floodplain is, those, there's 16 flood zones. Those are designated in the firm, the federal insurance rate maps. So you cannot waive a federal requirement. You also cannot waive 780 CMR. That's the building code, which, which are building standards and regulations for construction. And as Bill explained...
And we can't waive building permits and construction permits and the like.
Right, and you can't, and that AE zone, which is a high-hazard zone, it's, you know, flood within 100 years, as you pointed out, 1% chance in one year. And that, the base elevation was, I think, 181.4, was that correct? 180.4. And all those, the lowest level of a foundation, was it 183?
183.
183, I think, 180.
182.
182. So, you know, he's got his design standards, and they're all above that, so the buildings are gonna be constructed above that, so that's not gonna be a problem. But it was a moot point to waive that because the design standards are above that, and you can't waive federal regulations. So there's no permit required under 9.3 of our, I mean, we discussed that. Do we wanna waive that? Well, yeah, we can waive it, but it's, you can't waive the federal requirements, you can't waive the building code requirements, so do you waive it?
No, my point is, it's just an issue that I wanna make certain that we're not...
We certainly discussed it.
Let's put it this way, if we deny the application, it's a moot point, but...
Right. Well, we can...
But if we're going to approve something, I wanna make certain that...
Point well taken.
We cover, although, obviously, we can always modify, but I wanna make certain that we haven't missed anything. And in that regard, I do wanna keep open the possibility of a working session to discuss, and that would involve you and Scott Chippy.
We don't wanna miss anything.
And Scott Chippy and Paige and one of us, because as they borrow line from Hamilton, we wanna have, we wanna be in the room where it happens.
Sure, we welcome that opportunity, because we don't wanna miss anything either.
We'll hold that in abeyance, there's no urgency, but something to think about.
We're open to that.
Dave, Kim, Judy, Dylan, Lorraine, Kurt, anybody have any questions or comments?
Bonnie?
Bonnie?
Yeah.
So it's more a comment than a question, but if waivers 1 and 2 are granted, which basically says, it's gonna say that we are giving up some industrial, industrial zone land in favor of residential, which means there would be less industrial land available in the town. I guess we call that a comment, not a question, unless my premise is wrong.
It's a comment, right?
And that's it.
I mean, other 40Bs that we've approved, where we might have had something in a R-40 zone, and we've approved, you know, a multifamily development, we've given up land for, you know, for R-40s, so that's, I guess, part and parcel of what the process is. Kim?
Nothing, thank you.
Okay. Lorraine, Kurt, Judy, any comments or questions?
No, not at this time, Mr. Chair. I've appreciated your frequent quotes from other parties in order to explain what's going on, and it's great. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, let's talk about next time. August 25th would be the next hearing session, and I think you said Jeremy's gonna be here then?
Correct.
Okay, because we really wanted to talk about the specifics of the layout, size of the buildings, what's affordable, what's not. I would hope we would have a landscape, preliminary landscape plan in advance to review that. So it's really sort of the offsite of what Bill did a couple weeks ago or last week onsite, just to really understand what the project is as it is being proposed. I would expect an invoice from Environmental Partners at the end of the month, and has the escrow payment been received?
I received it today, and I had to request an account number, so I just got that this evening, so I can deposit it tomorrow.
Okay, good. I asked Diana to determine the availability of other dates in October, November, or additional dates in October, November. And I think October, Diana said, probably is a no. There's a possibility of an additional date in November. I'm not saying... I'm not saying right now that we'll meet on another night, but I want to hold open that possibility if, if need be. And we could talk about that probably in September. We can assess where we are, whether we need a, an additional night or two. Okay? Anybody have any questions?
Mr. Chair? Sorry. Just one thing I wanted to mention, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt you. If there's going to be a working session with the applicant and the board would like me to participate, I'd be happy to do that. If you don't need me, that's fine, but you may want my ears there.
Okay, thank you. We probably want your voice as well, Judy. Your, your voice as well as your ear.
But not my clever quotations, right?
Do you want to coordinate a work, workshop on the waivers through Page?
Not yet.
Okay.
Not yet. There's a lot of things I've neglected recently that I got to take care of, so not yet. As I said, there's no urgency just yet. So with that, Diana, what do we have next month so far, besides the-
We got the cell tower and maybe that sign, if that-
So, do you want to set a time for this? We, we still have two weeks to go before the deadline, though.
Um, yeah, because August is 25th, so the deadline's August 5th, yeah. So, I mean, generally, we usually, you would want these at the end of whatever.
Yeah. And then we could say 7:30 for this, but it's going to be later than that.
Unless the other things don't show up, then-
Yeah, well, I, I, I know with the application that we have and the one that we're probably going to get, we're going to need a good 45 minutes at least. So even if we set this for 7:30, which, I think, would be sort of logical, it's not going to happen at 7:30. So, you want to do that?
Sure.
So why don't we have a motion to continue this hearing until 7:30 PM on August 25? Dave or Kim?
I move that this hearing be continued to 7:30 on August 25.
Second.
Okay, Dave?
Aye.
Kim?
Aye.
I guess I got to say aye, too. So, 7:30 on the 25th. Do we have any other business? No. Motion to adjourn.
So move we adjourn?
Second.
Dave?
Aye.
Kim?
Aye.
Kurt?
Thank you, Chair.
Aye. Lorraine?
Thanks, man.
And Barney? Aye.